Now that our city attorney is back. All right. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Destin City Council, September 7th, 2021, to order. Up first, we have invocation by Pastor David Butler. Sir?
Most gracious heavenly Father, we pause to invoke your blessing upon this meeting tonight. We thank you for our servants of the city that you have blessed us with. We ask, Lord, that you give them wisdom and clarity and the direction of our communities. Father, we thank you for yesterday, the conclusion, as the formal conclusion, it being Labor Day of the summer season. We thank you for a year of prosperity and blessing. We thank you for the seeds that yielded its harvest. We thank you for restaurants and all the other businesses and hotels that have reaped bountifully the last few months. Father, we ask that you would bless each one. And according to Numbers, Chapter 6, the priestly blessing says this, "Now may the Lord bless you and keep you; may his face shine upon you and be gracious to you; may he give you his peace and his favor." Amen.
And Lance, do you have something that you would like to add?
Yes, sir. If council would be so kind to let me move item 4G, the Captain Royal Melvin Heritage Park update up to just before A on 4A.
So move.
I got a motion. I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so move. There you go, Lance. Anyone else? Okay. I will move on then to item 1A, approval of minutes. Entertainer motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? Eyes have it, so move. All right. I don't think we have any block of motion, recognitions, or special presentations, other than go Knowles. Next, up next is item 3.
Still an L. Still an L.
Yeah, I can't hear you. Public comments on agenda items that are not public hearings and any other matters not on the agenda. You have three minutes. All you have to do is state your name and your address and give it away, or take it away. I will look over here to this portion of room. Is anyone that wants to make a public comment over here to my left? In the center? Anyone? Anyone over here to my right or right center? All right. I see no public comments, so I'm going to close that portion of the meeting, and we will fly right into the city manager report. Take it away, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with item regarding Captain Royal Melvin Heritage Park update. Staff did meet with Mr. Garvey, both the Garvey brothers and the sister Tracy, this afternoon. We discussed the condition of the restroom walls, which is still somewhat of an issue that we're trying to correct. I think the staff reached out as best we could, and Mr. Buckingham offered to meet the Garvys down on site and take a look at the walls in person and mark the ones that we believe needed to be looked at. And that took place. I don't know how well received it was or not, but that's beside the point. We're going to move on to get our engineer of record to formally put in writing what they believe is or is not acceptable down there and move forward based on that information. Also, with the departure of Mr. Smith imminent the week from Friday, we're looking to engage the engineer to help us with two monthly inspections, plus to help us verify the billings that will be submitted. And I believe that it will be under my thresholds. I believe I can just take care of that, but I wanted to make you aware that we want to make that move coming up here shortly. And I don't know if Mr. Buckingham has any other comments.
Is it okay, we have a consensus then, to let Lance go ahead and employ that engineer to get the documents that we need? You got it. Looks like you have it without having to have a motion. Phone, Mr. Destin?
Got it. Any timeframe on possible solutions of when they're going to get back to us?
With the engineers or the?
The contractor.
The contractor. Let Mr. Buckingham answer that.
Mike Buckingham, 510 Calhoun. As of this evening or this afternoon, we've decided to go ahead and contact the engineer of record, the architect of record, and also the civil engineer of record, and ask them to please give us a full report after our conversation this afternoon with the contractor. So my understanding, we should have a letter within one week of recommendations from the ERO to tell us what they want, what they want, because we weren't able to come up with an agreement today with the contractor.
I appreciate it. First, I was going to request if we could have somebody turn off that fan in the hallway, if possible. It's hard to hear. And the second was going to be, just to double check, who met on site today, staff, Mr. Buckingham? Who all was meeting today? Could you restate that?
Yeah, Mr. Buckingham met, oh, who all met today? Today, gosh.
On site.
On site was Mr. Buckingham and Bill Garvey, the general contractor.
And his superintendent.
And his superintendent Keith. I don't remember Keith's last name.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and I think it is worth noting, and I don't want to make a big deal out of this, but I think it's worth noting that once during the staff meeting this morning, and once while on site, of which this is hearsay from me because I wasn't on site, but I was at the staff meeting, that for whatever reason, when we were trying to operate in good faith, the Garvys did bring up that we could deal with them in court or deal with their lawyers. So I just want to make you aware that those were thrown out there. And I, you know that I can receive comments like that probably every week from someone. So, I mean, it's not a surprise to me, but I wanted to make you aware that they were throwing those allegations out.
Mr. Brayden?
It's Bill and Joe, is that correct? Okay. I was a little confused last time because Joe said he's the one signing the contracts. Is Bill the contractor and Joe is just authorized to sign?
Yeah, I need to check myself because after that meeting, I went back and looked, and Joe was correct. He did sign the contract, I believe. Bill signed the proposal.
Rodney, this might help you too. I believe that Bill Garvey is the qualifier for the company. Joe Garvey is the vice president of the company, so he can legally bind the company, but Bill is the qualifier and the engineer, right, Mike?
Okay. And the pump, did we get the pump squared away? The lift pump, they're not, us not holding anybody up anymore, so we don't have that excuse?
We got that taken care of today. Well, we got taken care of last week, but they didn't, I guess they didn't understand from this council that I was in charge of that, so they didn't want to take my word last week, but they took it today. And also for this council, you know, last week, I think you all seen that I jumped up and ran in here real quick, only because I was listening to the conversation. And I do want you all to know that there is plenty of specs. There's specs on the entire site. I went over the specs with our building official to verify. The only thing that's not on the specs that they did bring up was the quality or the quantity or the specs on the epoxy paint that we're going to use on the inside of the bathroom walls, which is a Sherwin-Williams product, so it's a great product. We don't have the specs on that, and the specs on the lift station was minute. But being that I've been in that business 30 years, I got with the supplier and found out what they're going to supply and is going to be adequate for us to upgrade it in a later date without having to change anything. So yes. Otherwise, there's specs on the entire job.
All right. Mr. Bagby? And you, Johnny?
I'm not sure how old this contract is, but could you send me a copy of it, specifically the dispute resolution paragraph? Because I'm sure there's one in there, and I feel like I probably need to know that before our next meeting. So if you could help me out with that, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Take care of that, Lance. Mr. King?
Hey, Mike, real quick, can you give us a rundown of what your meeting was like today? I was, I went down there, I must have left right as you were pulling in because they were, Mr. Garvey had just shown up, and I was, I got to talk to the superintendent and look around and showed myself around, knowing what I know about construction sites, got a pretty good eye for things, and went and looked at the plans and have a copy. Took a few pictures, but what was the meeting like today? And what was the resolution with the sloping of the drains? And was there any? And can you tell us about the meeting you had today?
The drains are pretty simple today in our meeting here at 12:30. Bill Garvey did make the comment that his contractor, when he was grading around the drain, instead of taking the concrete up and removing it, he said, yes, they did push it up and they built a little berm, so they got that under control. They're going to take care of the drain. They promised the city manager they will take care of it, make sure the bathroom floor is drained properly.
They're going to grind that out, I guess?
Yes, sir, correct. And we're going to see, we're obvious, we're going to see how much they grind, because you can only grind so much without losing the integrity of the floor.
Right.
So we're keeping on that. But as far as the meeting today, you know, I offered to meet just one, just Bill. I can communicate with Bill real easy. I offered to go down there with him today, and I brought an eight-foot level, not a four-foot level, not a six-foot level. I brought an eight-foot level because that's where we're at with the walls, to show him really where this is at, and I'd plumb it up for him. His half-inch versus my three-quarters were a little different. You know, anyway, long story short, it didn't go over very well. It was going very well, and then, you know, when the legal got thrown at me, I just thought it would be best to tell them thank you and I'll move forward. Otherwise, everything was good.
Follow-up, Mike, please. All right. Just so I'm clear, just moving forward, we do have an engineer on record, we do have an architect on record. Both of those things we do have?
We have them, and tomorrow, we will, we have the, we have the civil engineer here in the audience tonight. This gentleman, Scott Jenkins, is the one that I say we, the city hired originally to do the project. So he's the one that designed the project, and then he brings on the structural engineer and the architect, yes.
And you said that we're waiting, we're going to have all these folks generate a letter?
Correct.
Of all their things that they're saying that we need to have done?
Their recommendations.
Fixed recommendations based upon specs and industry standards.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to be what we're using from the city's standpoint, to send to them, to ask them, here's our ultimatum type of, here's what we need and want. Is that what we're using?
Yes, I mean, we'll have the good and the bad with it. I mean, it'll be complete.
And when do we expect that, you said?
We have to do that because they have to sign off on the building.
And when did you say we were hoping to have all that?
Hopefully by the end of the week, if not first next week.
So that by next meeting, we should have an idea from them how they respond to that?
As soon as I get it in my hand, I'll forward it to the city manager, and I'm sure he'll forward it to all y'all, way before the meeting. Yes, correct.
Just a lot of, he said, she said, you know, there's no engineer on record, there's no architect on record. You say there is, there is, and so.
Who said there was?
Well, I mean, you know, it's just back and forth. Now, they're not here to say anything, but.
They also said there was no specs to it.
I agree. It's just back and forth, so I mean, I just, I can't wait to hear their response on this letter.
There weren't any specs on the drain. I looked at the whole plan, and I didn't see any specs on the drain.
On the drain itself?
The drain's in the restroom.
Right. But Johnny, please keep in mind, as a contractor, and I think Rodney, he does the same stuff, anybody will tell you, when you're in a bathroom man or in a kitchen, if you've got a drain, that drain's for water to go to, okay? It's not to go up to.
I understand what you're saying. I looked at the plans, and there's not, there are no specs for the drains to drain.
Right. And most, in most plans, there's not a spec that says you need a quarter inch of fall to get to that drain. Most of them are not. Why? Because we pretty much know that. You know you've got to put bait on your hook before you catch fish. So that's what they have to do.
All right, got one last question. Stay there, right there, Mike. Go ahead, Dr. Ramsell.
Actually, I was just going to reiterate that last time, they said there were no specs. There was no engineer of record, no architect of record, and now we're hearing the polar opposite.
Well, that's, I think, what this report by these guys are for, is to let us know that our project manager and the city manager are going to dot their i's and cross their t's, because if we do have to go into any type of dispute resolution, we'll have, we'll be equipped. All right, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Okay, go ahead, Lance.
Thanks, sir. And now, item 4A is the TDD expansion update with Mr. Jeff Burns. Jeff?
Talked to some of y'all today, and I talked to some of y'all on Friday, and actually more of an update now than I had for some of y'all that I've talked today. The county commission did vote around 3:45, 4 o'clock timeframe today, to go ahead and formally offer the agreement that I emailed to everyone earlier. So it's now a formal counteroffer to the offer that y'all made last week. And I think they said it is contingent on the other three primary entities, which are , or two, it's Crestview, Mariestor, and, yeah, Crestview, Mariestor, and Fort Walton signing off as well. The other entities would not necessarily have to sign off for them to honor the agreement. But the general terms in the counteroffer were a 20-year term as opposed to the 28-year term that was in your offer that you made last week. And they clarified the force majeure language a little bit, or they added a force majeure provision, and we did a lot of negotiating on that. And they were actually very amenable, just to kind of give you how the climate went on that, as opposed to some of the early negotiations where they were very line in sand and not willing to make changes. They were very amenable to massaging the force majeure language, to where it was something that all the attorneys were comfortable on. From the standpoint, it does offer a date, it's a month for month, not a day-to-day extension. So if they do have hurricane hits and they have to suspend the agreement for three or four months in order, just because it's too hard to either keep up the collections or the numbers get so low that the 40% or wherever the threshold is to meet the yearly expenditure on the advertising costs has to be met in a certain way, they can still do that, it will extend the life of the agreement. So if they have to suspend it at a certain point in time, and we kind of went back and forth initially, I thought I was wording a little too broadly on how they had it worded in that they could put anything under the sun and through the agreement. They took out a lot of things in there, and really, it's pretty clear that it has to be something that the president, the governor, and they said the county commission would have to declare a state of emergency on, so it would have to be a hurricane, a war, or an oil spill, or possibly a pandemic type of event. So it's a, they were very good on negotiating on that one point. Also, the, there's kind of been two separate negotiations ongoing, because the municipalities came up with the agreement that y'all kind of ratified and sent forwards a formal offer last week at separate negotiations that we had from the county. And, but once that offer was made, we started getting some pushback from some of the municipalities on some terms. I stayed strong on all the terms for the city and didn't really bend on anything at all. So the veto agreement for the city is still in there, and that the percentage that the city will get paid for the next, if it's 20, 25, or 28 years, whatever the final agreement has in it, will remain as agreed upon, which is 48.5% of the 12.5% of the TDC revenues. And I think that about did it. And I know tomorrow, I'm asking y'all to make any decision here tonight in response to the formal agreement from the county. I might have, if they would have approved of the form of the ordinance and how the board makeup would be, tonight I'm going to ask y'all, this might have been the time to at least get the ball rolling on that. But at that meeting today, there was some confusion amongst the commission and the staff and some of the other folks over there, and I think it was more on how it was presented to them. And because I think they didn't know that at the time that Fort Walton and Destin had reached an agreement informally, at least, to where, with all the staff members, and I think some feedback from Fort Walton Beach, elected officials at the previous council meeting, to where Fort Walton would be willing to give up their guaranteed spot for an elected official position if they could appoint someone, if they just had the power of appointment over somebody. It didn't have to be an elected official, it could be anybody who's just a Fort Walton Beach resident. And it would have to be someone tied to the tourism industry, so a hotelier or whatnot, but still, and it could be an elected official. They wouldn't put a limitation on that. Well, that kind of created some confusion today, I think, with the board of county commission. So they did not actually vote to approve of the makeup of the board or the ordinance itself. They tabled it to tomorrow to have that discussion. So I would probably think what we'll do tomorrow is show up and get them started on that one issue first, before, because I know from what I've heard from the Destin City Council and all of y'all, say y'all are very adamant, you want one of the city council members to be one of the TDC members. And so that will need to be communicated very clearly to everyone there, and I think we can get that done first, and if that's agreed upon, then maybe y'all can take a vote. Y'all will have the power to take a vote on this tomorrow, and just let y'all know, because it's been properly noticed for that. I think Fort Walton will be in the same position. I'm not sure about Mariestor. I know Fort Walton did notice it, though. And so there's a possibility that all the primary parties could reach an agreement tomorrow, and then it would just be kind of up to the rest of us to go around getting these other smaller entities, to make sure they get their board meetings in in time to get signed up.
So it's important that as many of the city council members that can attend, attend, because there will be that opportunity, not only to voice our preference on the committee or the council makeup, but actually to vote on it as well.
Well, at least a quorum does have to show up where the city can get.
But didn't we already say that we were all going to be there except Ms., she's teaching, correct?
That's good, because it's not really optional, just wanted y'all to know that it would, know that the statute doesn't allow it to be. Or I'm, obviously, if you can't be there with an excuse, Mr. Ramsell.
Thanks, sir. Got a question, Mr. Ramsell?
As I was going to say, obviously, I'll take any questions right now, but I don't really need any direction in terms of negotiating, because I've done all I can at this point. It'll be up to y'all tomorrow at the meeting, so if y'all are okay with 20, or y'all want something more than that.
So I just have a couple of questions about the force majeure paragraph. It states a catastrophic event, but how are we defining, how are they defining the parameters? Because it lists pandemic, it lists a natural disaster. Is there a certain threshold that has to be made? And with that, obviously, then it's got the state of the emergency clause, but it's an or, not an and statement, and I noticed that it's not allowing a state of emergency by a city. It's only the board and higher. So I guess those are my first two questions.
The first I have, maybe wasn't what I sent to you, does have an and, it says, and a state of emergency is declared by the board of county commissioners, governor or president. So it is connected to as a condition. So now, I know the nightmare scenario you might be thinking about is the board of county commission might just declare a state of emergency. Obviously, the governor and the president wouldn't just do that willy-nilly, because there's major legal ramifications if they do that across the board in terms of tax. You know, people have to pay taxes if the president does it for a certain period of time. you know, people don't have to pay taxes if the president does it for a certain period of time. And so I am not exactly sure as to the legal effect of the board of county commission declaring a state of emergency. And I could probably stick around and get that answer for you unless Kyle knows the answer.
I can opine, maybe not specifically, but just generally speaking, local governments, both cities and counties, have specific emergency management provisions in their code. And I'm sure, like the city of Destin does, we only have the ability to declare states of emergencies in the event of certain catastrophes. And I'm sure that the board of county commissioners has certain other similar parameters like that.
It's a good question. I'm going to get an answer for the rest of the board by tomorrow morning, if I can't get you an answer tonight on that, what the parameters are for the county commission to declare a state of emergency.
That's great. And I don't know that we'd ever declare a state of emergency when the county would not, but who, you never know. I mean, something might impact us, but not the greater county, and our own state of emergency would suffice, but you just don't know. And I, it could be a loophole.
Ask your second part of your question, that I think maybe part of it was dealt with by the fact that it says, and a state of emergency is declared. Kind of going back to the broadness of what's a catastrophic event. They, they did say catastrophic events such as. I think the limitation, though, of having a state of emergency be declared does really kind of narrow it down, because I, I was going back and forth with them on the epidemic and the pandemic, because actually tourist development revenues are, I think, astronomically high because of the pandemic, ultimately. They, they shut down to nothing for six to eight weeks, and now, once everyone started to come to Florida to take vacations, they're now higher than they've ever been. So I was kind of advocating for an objective measure on that. Enough of the other folks pushed back between the cities and the county, saying, you know, something that might be worse than COVID down the line is actually a little more infectious and actually kills a higher percentage of people, and maybe people don't want to be around other people on that. So that, that's something, though, to keep in mind. If y'all do have an issue with that, then maybe sleep on it tonight and get with me tomorrow, and we can discuss it.
Would it be unreasonable for us to assume that the reason those provisions are put in there anyways is because some type of event, whether you name it or not, that would affect tax revenues and make them way less than is projected? That, that's, is that the fair assumption?
Most catastrophic events are going to cause a decline. I think COVID is a little, little bit an oddity, at least for the state of Florida in terms of revenues.
It wasn't for about 46 days. It was pretty cataclysmic when we let 264 employees off, and the bosses were unemployed as well. So it can, it can be either way. We, we actually just were very fortunate that our governor opened our short-term rentals back up.
I will note, it does have a, it's not day-for-day, it's a month-for-month extension. So if they declare it one month, it'll add, tack it on to the end of the agreement. And then if there are, if revenues do go down, so they'll say they don't suspend the entire agreement, but they say we're only going to allocate half the revenues for the next three months to deal with this unplanned catastrophic event. It does have a provision in here that they will make that up to, and even up everything.
So that actually brings us to my last question, which was, obviously, this is based on a percentage amount, and us getting a 12.5 percentage to be distributed amongst the group. However, my point being that 12.5% is 12.5% of 24 million, the same as it is 15 million or 10 million. So why is that even being considered a suspension, meaning when they're still going to have some money coming in that has to be allocated a certain way?
I advocated for it not to be in there, but this is the counter offer, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Might be a good question for tomorrow.
Well, if somebody will remember that and ask it.
That's right.
And, and we were not alone, actually, in that, too. Crestview and Destin were advocating for a pure objective, why does it matter? 12.5% is 12.5%. So that was a point that was brought up.
I guess if it was bad enough and it got to zero, then it would matter. There's no way it come.
And they had their reasons that they wanted it in there. I think it's one of those, you can never be happy totally at a mediation. So, you know, this is going to be an agreement ultimately, you know.
The proverbial throw my bone. Correct. All right. Thank you, sir.
It's at 8:30, by the way.
8:30. Convention Center, correct? 8:30 at the Convention Center. We only have to drive halfway tomorrow morning. All righty. Lance, take it away.
Thanks, sir. Item 4B is Schedule of Fees Resolution 21-11, and staff is asking for council's approval of that resolution as presented. And we have Ms. Crystal Strickland here to answer any questions for you.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead. Read the motion, please, for, for the record.
I move to approve and adopt Schedule of Fees Resolution 21-11 as presented.
Do I have a second? I got a sure second. And first up is Mr. Smith, then Mr. Destin. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Was anything looked at, and specifically to the code violation fines and special magistrate fines?
Okay, so the, the primary reason we brought this schedule of fees to you is that we needed to get our, our library onto the same schedule as the rest of Ocalusa County. So no, at this point, they did not look at the code and special magistrate fees.
I'll chime in there, Crystal, too, and note that we did include a provision in the resolution that would allow the council to amend the schedule of fees throughout the course of this fiscal year, if you so choose. So that certainly could be brought back, and that could be amended by a resolution.
So based on what you're saying, Ms. Strickland, would you or somebody else know why we updated the vacated right-of-way fee and the fee for major development as well?
I think that Louis from Community Development could answer that question.
Sure. Good evening, council members. The development fee actually is not an update. That's the current fee right now. What happened is the last time you updated the fee, it did not get into the schedule, the official schedule. So we're just correcting that error. That fee has not gone up, and it will be part of the discussion we're going to have shortly when we discuss overall cost of doing business in the city and the building elements. With respect to the right-of-way fee, I think we have had a situation where that has remained pretty low for a number of years. I have done some review and calculations. It takes roughly over 80 hours for each application to take place. And you have staff in my office, public service office, folks, our city engineer, our land use attorney, and our clerk's office all involved in that process. And I think that fee does need to be adjusted, so it accounts for the time that the city staff does work on this. And we think raising from the 500 to 2,500 is a fair adjustment.
Thank you. So if, if I were to ask, put you on the spot, and, and ask if it would be acceptable to raise the code violation fee and special magistrate fees based on the same type of theory that it's code enforcement is one of our most strenuous, one of the most strenuous departments we have, and it seems like there's a lot of follow-up issues and different things we have, and a lot of times, business owners just don't really care about the fees, because it's not that bad. Would this be the acceptable time to just double the fee?
Can I jump in there for a minute?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Please.
Okay, thanks. With regard to special magistrate fines, those are actually set by statute in Chapter 162. So for violations, the special magistrate can go up to $250 a day for a daily fine. And then if it's a repeat violation, meaning they've been found in violation before and they're doing the same type of violation again, then it can go up to $500 a day for that daily fine. What council could raise in the code is certain citations, citations could be increased, but just not the actual special magistrate fines beyond the statute.
Okay, thank you. So then the administrative fee of $500 for the special magistrate, is that, is that us, or is that the state?
No, you, you, you can increase the administrative fee. That was recently, that should have recently been increased, I think, last year. But you can increase that again if you want to.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a red-line version? How many fees did we go up on? Are, is the right-of-way and the master development, or major development, are those the only fees we went up on?
Yes, sir. Mainly, this was taking the schedule of fees, reformatting it into something that's more user-friendly for, for citizens who are looking to pay a fee. And then also, the, the second main reason that we did this right now is be, like I mentioned before, was for the library mainly. The library did, I did not put in the notes on there, the main change at the library, we have Wen here to talk to the changes, but the main change was they're no longer going to charge late fees for people to return books, because the library association believes that people are more likely to actually return the books if you don't charge that small fee on a daily basis. But Wen is here to answer any questions on the library fee changes. All the other changes I listed right here, and these are the six that are listed in the agenda cover page.
And I, and I read that explanation. It made sense. They believed it was counterproductive, I believe. So the only two we're going up on in this document is the vacate and major development, correct?
Just, just correction. The major development is not a change at all. That's the current fee right now. It's a correction of what should have been in the schedule prior.
So the vacate is really the only one we've gone up on?
Correct.
And correct me, there's supposed to be some kind of a nexus between what we charge and what it costs us to, to provide the service? Is that right?
Correct. And that's what I just outlined, the number of.
And we have some kind of supporting documentation that says going from 500 to 2,500 meets that test?
Correct.
Over my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Destin. Next, well, Jimmy, you took your name down? No? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. So I already asked the, or Mr. Destin already asked the red-line question, so I think we've got that covered, the track change version. When will, can we expect, kind of to piggyback on Kevin's question, to see the revenue neutral and the staff's proposed changes to the schedule that takes care of the building department? And, you know, and I don't want to pin you down on a date specific, but I want to pin you down on, I don't want this to be a year from now. So when do we think we will have the consultants get us the numbers back and all that?
Yeah, we have, Louis, again, has been coordinating that, so I'll let him speak to the, the main changes.
I am in the process right now of negotiating a potential contract that I'll bring before you within the next two months for your consideration. And I will show you what our current fees at this point, and what the discrepancies, and what the consultant needs to look at and determine whether it's a fair exchange or not.
So when are you going to bring that back? That's my question. Not the contract, the new fee schedule. I, I like marks on a wall, because then I make little notes, and then when we get close to that mark, I go, hey, where are we?
Right. I would say within the next six months.
Six months. So this is the first meeting of September, so the first meeting of March, we expect to have a new fee schedule.
Correct.
With track changes. Thank you very much.
Ms. Abert?
Mr. Bagby just answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Lance? Any further discussion? Any questions? Seeing none? The vote is unanimous. So moved.
Up next, we have the stormwater master plan update with Mr. Louis Zinguzzi and his staff.
Thank you, Lance. This is a follow-up to a previous update that the staff provided regarding our stormwater master plan in the city. If you recall that last update, you listed a number of projects, and you gave us a charge to go back and prioritize those projects and bring that prioritized list back to you. I have one of my staff members here to give you that presentation, and we'll get your input thereafter. Tracy?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm happy to come before you and present the stormwater master plan update. As Mr. Zinguzzi mentioned, on August 17th, 2020, staff did come before you and presented the city council the stormwater master plan updates. So the, the update provided the following. A redefined drainage basins and flow rates, a proposed list of projects and mitigation strategies, in addition to policy recommendations related to stormwater and flood control. And the update included a total of 12 projects in one drainage basin study. Following that meeting, staff directed staff to prioritize those projects. They were based upon the level of service, and these were the six items, or the five items, my apologies. Public safety, health, and wealth concern, welfare concerns, hazard potential, economic impacts, water quality impacts, in addition to jurisdictional compliance. Now, as I mentioned originally, there were 12 projects identified in one drainage basin study. Upon further observation, city staff suggests two other study areas be included. The Kelly Addition subdivision area, in addition to the Destin Harbor. Out of those 12 projects, two of the projects were removed ultimately due to Quail Run being private infrastructure, 100% private infrastructure. Tristate Terrace, recently, the city portion has been completed. Upon further observation, city staff does suggest to include one additional project, which would be Eagles Landing Subdivision, which is off of Indian Trail. So that said in all, staff is bringing before you three identified study areas, which will be the Indian Bayou, Indian Lake subdivision, Kelly Addition, the Second and Third Street area, in addition to the Destin Harbor. So projects identified within these study areas would be potential candidates for capital improvement projects, grant funding, and/or continuing service contracts. Here is our list of prioritized projects based on frequency and magnitude of flooding. You can see the level of service classification A through F. These are in the prioritized order. And here we have a global map identifying the projects throughout the city. They are labeled also in prioritized order. And you'll also see our flood, our flood map superimposed on that map in addition to the study areas, the three identified study areas. In addition to the two initiatives, and, well, sorry, in addition to the two new projects, or two new study areas and one additional project, staff has suggested two city initiatives. So these city initiatives will include a stormwater infrastructure maintenance plan. So this stormwater information, this stormwater infrastructure maintenance plan will involve a citywide swale initiative. So this initiative will involve public education. It'll involve reconstruction and stabilization of our existing roadside swales, in addition, in addition to looking at right-of-way that we currently have, or right-of-way, obviously, that we do have, and can be utilized also to, to make for swales. In addition, this project or this plan will support and maintain our compliance on our MPDS permits. And also, staff suggests that the stormwater master plan be updated under a five-year review. This would coincide also with our MPDS permitting. And as mentioned, this is a critical planning tool to secure funding for projects. And with that, at this time, city staff requests direction from city council regarding whether to proceed with the prioritized project list as presented, the identified study areas, and the city initiatives. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Have any questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead, Dr. Ramsell.
I was trying to find, but our record system is down, so I couldn't dig into our archives. A few years ago, when I was on council, and I believe actually Councilwoman Trammell was still on council, we had discussed at length revamping and redoing the stormwater plan. And I thought we had approved that way back then, and there had already been funds allocated and everything. And I could be completely wrong, but I, I feel like it was when Ms. Lejeune was here, because it was one of her priorities. Did y'all find any records on that, or do you have any, it wouldn't be recollection because y'all weren't here, but it was a pretty big priority.
We can certainly check and get back to you.
Okay, it seems like I'm not the only one that recalls that, so I don't know what happened, if something slipped through the cracks, but it was definitely a big, big deal. So, regardless, I appreciate y'all getting on this now and us moving forward, because obviously there are still some areas that are very much negatively impacted by stormwater and issues with water outfalls and such. So, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, sir. This is fantastic, and very excited. Question on reconstruction and stabilization of existing roadside swells. How does that work in regards to you driving around, and I'm assuming that's what that means, you're driving around and you see something that needs to be added, a new swell or something like that, but there's already, in the right of way, a previously approved construction design driveway, anything or not approved item there? How does that unfold?
So, the only conveyances that would be part of the citywide, the city initiative, would be those that the city has constructed in its own right of way. There would be, the public education and outreach opportunity would be reaching out to those subdivisions with their approved plans, who they're responsible for maintaining, so that we can get everyone on board to discuss the maintenance going forward. Because oftentimes, you can see where in some areas the swales have been filled in, and in other areas they haven't. So, this is kind of a push to kind of, to bring this to light and see if we can move that initiative forward.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Braden?
Thank you. Has any of this been brought before the Public Works and Safety Committee? Are they involved in that?
Not yet, but that's our next move. If you are comfortable with what we've presented here, we would go to all the other boards and get further input.
Thank you.
Just one more thing.
Dr. Ramswell, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, just one more thing to add. I believe what I'm recalling was back when they looked at Indian Bayou and discovered all of our swales were non-existent, so they went through and redug all the swales along Country Club and further down. So, I think this was all part of whatever it was we had discussed several years ago that was trying to get this new plan and attack different elements of it. That might help you locate timeframe and information.
All righty then, we have a couple of recommended motions, so I'll entertain.
Yeah, I'll move that the city council approve the project prioritization based upon the 2004 SWMP level of service identified in study areas and the city initiatives, and that these items be brought before the city advisory boards for recommendation to council.
I'll second.
I have a motion, and I second. Is there any further discussion, questions? Seeing none? The vote is unanimous, so moved. Sir?
Item 4D is regarding water access locations. This is an ongoing item that the staff has been working on, and they have put together a whole lot of information and are seeking your direction on which way to proceed forward.
Joe, you want to proceed?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a presentation of the water access locations, where city council directed staff to review the right of ways, properties, and or easements with water access, which are best suited for public use, including cost of clearing, cleaning up, to make them accessible to the public and bring back suggestions. Previously... Okay. There we go. Previously, staff identified 30 locations of city properties that have water access. Of those 30 properties, 20 of these properties have no issues and are established public accesses that are maintained by the city. And that would be the 20 there, and then their location. Of the remaining 10 properties, three properties specifically Bayview Street, Cobb Point Drive, and the unnamed Twin Lakes right of way are currently not accessible and have no encroachment issues. These rights of ways are unimproved and wooded. They are feasible to be cleaned up and provide public waterfront access. The unnamed Twin Lakes right of way is phase four of the proposed Gulf Power Linear Park Initiative. And the location of those. The remaining seven properties, staff will need some guidance and direction due to encroachment issues. First item is Harbor Lane. This right of way has a block wall and landscaping that was placed in the right of way. There we go.
This block means cement?
Yes. The other properties... The other properties specifically Fourth Street, Sixth Street, Jupiter Street, and Third Street rights of ways, the Lakeside Village subdivision retention area, have encroachments ranging from storage of vehicles, boats, debris and materials, to fencing and boat docks. Sterling Shores Beach Access is completely closed off. Several of these encroachments could be resolved through code compliance standard process, however, the remaining of these, including the block wall, the boat docks, and the closed beach access, may require some level of legal assistance to resolve. The encroachments on these six properties could impact possible public access and need city council direction on how they wish to proceed. At this time, if there are any questions?
I, I don't know.
Hey, Dr. Ramswell?
So, a couple of years ago, we discovered that the Sterling Shores one was closed off, and I had directed staff or attorneys at that time to look into the issue. And I remember following up on it several months later and saying it was, hearing that it was still being looked into, but we never got any follow-up, and that's now been more than a year. What is the status of that? Because it was being looked into legally.
Kim, do you have a response to that? I know you were involved with that with Webb.
I believe this is the one where Kyle and I reached out to the title company. Is that, is this the one that you and I discussed, Kyle?
I think this is the, we may have reached out to the title company. It involved Matthews &amp; Jones was representing Sterling Shores. We had some back and forth with their attorney by letter, I believe.
Right. Yeah, I'll, Councilmember Ramswell, I'll have to go back and check out the status. There was significant correspondence between Dana Matthews' firm and the attorneys for the city, and I just don't recall offhand where it was left, but I remember lots of discussion about it. So, let us get back to you, please, either at the last meeting, or I can call you as soon as I get the information, but I'm sure we'll share it with the entire council at the next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
It's interesting that you said, not you, Kim, but staff, you noted that there are properties with no access but no issues. Well, to me, no access is an issue, because if it's a right of way, it's supposed to have access. Am I misinterpreting what you mean by that?
Yes, ma'am. Those particular segments of rights of way are vacant and wooded. They can easily be cleaned up and create access at this point in time. The wooded areas make it inaccessible.
Okay, I got you. So, it's not like there's no access because there's a brick wall, or there's some impediment to actually accessing it, other than Mother Nature?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And that's all I have for right now, thank you.
All right, Ms. Abert?
I was wondering, how were these areas found? On foot or with an aerial view by Google or something like that?
Both. They were found on aerial, and then they were verified by walking out to the sites.
So, doing it both those ways, as a personal example, it's very easy for co-compliance to go in and say, you don't own that property, that's city property, we're going to give you 30 days to vacate, clean up, whatever. And I know it works, because we had the same issue, we had no idea of, and we cleaned it up. So, I think if it's doable with code compliance, I think that's the route we should go with, and sooner than later.
Yes, ma'am. And some of these would be able to be done through that code compliance standard process. Others may have other, other issues that we were unable to uncover at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, sir. Two thoughts. One, I would like to, we could do what I need to do to figure out how to make this happen, but the properties with no access and no issues, I'd like to see what the cost would be to clean it up and create waterfront access, to have that presented to us, so we know what the cost would be.
Can I ask a question regarding that? Just so I'm clear.
Sure.
Do you want to make that part of the next visioning session? Because we're just about to approve our budget for the upcoming year, so would it be for the next fiscal? I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly the direction.
Well, I mean, we've been presented with this great maps of all these properties, but if you want direction from us, for example, if I want to give you direction on the number three, the three properties, what direction do you want me to give you? Go clean it up and make it access, or just bring me kind of an idea of what it's going to cost, you know?
I think, can I just say something real quick? I think that there's a, I, we've got a, we have a list of priorities for the year. We, I talked to Lance about this earlier, and I feel like we focus on, we're focusing on a lot of things. Some of these, some of these things are part of that, if I'm not mistaken. Not all of them are part of that. So, just, just a thought.
Just, and remember, folks, what that, that action list that we get every couple of days after our last council meeting looks like? So, this, this is maybe an item. Some of these properties have never been utilized for 40 years, 50 years, 100. So, when we get, I think what Lance is fishing, when he's talking about, we got our visioning session come up, if this month, if this is a, now that these properties have been identified, and maybe we can all walk them on our own and see where they're at, and what, what the access to the water looks like, you know? Is it a cliff, or is it a nice sandy area, or is it wetlands, which creates its own set of issues? Maybe instead of trying to task these guys to start opening up waterfront access, I think we better do this.
If I could interrupt you real quick, Mr. Mayor, they asked us for direction on what to do. I simply am asking if they could just bring us some cost ideas of cleaning up the properties that y'all said there's no issues with code enforcement or anything. So, if that's not what they're asking us to do, then I'm completely lost. Nothing to do with vision or strategies, I mean, that's Mr. Bodie or whoever's asking for direction on how, what to do. And so, I guess my direction was to give us just a rough estimate of cleaning up some shrubs and making access. That's my thought.
Lance, is that what you were looking for?
Looking at me?
City manager?
Yeah. From our standpoint, there are some that are clean that we can, we can certainly come back and say to you, it will cost so much to get access to, if I get the direction that you are seeking to give us. And so, that's one batch. And then the next one is, with those that have got encumbrances on them, how do you want to proceed?
I got a list of folks that want to talk, so let's just work our way through the list, and maybe we'll answer some of these questions. Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing I would point out is, many of these easements have in them what they can be used for, in very particular language. Before we strike forward and spend too much time, we need to look at what the easements say, because some of them will not allow us to use them as water access. And so, inventory in them is good, we have to go look and see what it says, or it may not be an option at all. So, I would recommend, Mr. Kevin is going to send them forward to look at them. Somewhere in this process, we have to see what the easements actually say. That'd be my only point. Thanks.
Dr. Ramswell? No. Mr. Bagby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To kind of piggyback on Mr. Destin's comments, we have a process. You've identified the problem, okay? You've identified all the accesses. So, now, what's the process to identify the solution? Take it to the committees. I think you mentioned part of the solution in your next to last slide. You take it to the committees, you take it to the attorneys to do the research on, can we use that, or is it restricted to a single purpose use, or what, what uses is it restricted to? And then the committees can help us prioritize, and then we can review what the, you know, we have a staff, let's let the staff do their job, and if you're asking for direction, you know, my only direction would be, do your job, involve the committees, bring us back to priority, which would include the cost, okay? But don't take nine months to do it. Seriously. I mean, this, to me, maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but this ought to be something that you can do in three months. Because you already identified, you got a known universe here, you got 30 properties or whatever. That's 30 easements you got to review, maybe, probably not even that many, and get a priority, and what the cost is. In three months, I can go walk, and I will probably go walk most of these and say, I can do this with a weed eater, okay? Or not. So, if you're looking for direction, I would say just follow our process. Thanks.
I'll rent you my tractor. Dr. Ramswell, I kicked you off, did you have another go-around?
Yeah.
Go ahead, then Rodney, you're next.
I want to thank y'all for bringing this up, because I remember requesting this back when we were discussing the Harbor Lane issue, and wanting to really take a look at what was out there and make sure that that was going to be able to be provided to the public, rather than just sit vacant and people not know about a lot of them. And I kind of looked at this as being in line with our strategic goals of three, four, five, and six, which all talk about connectivity, access, enhanced activities in areas for families and residents. And one of the thoughts I had too was letting parks and rec handle this. We have a committee system in place for a reason. It looks like a prime opportunity to get them involved, have them take a look, make some suggestions, and get back with us. So, thank you for bringing this back.
Thank you. Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. Few minutes ago, Mr. Bodie made a comment that there was some issues that have yet to be uncovered. Can you explain that?
Yes, sir, I can try. The boat docks more particularly, there is evidence that the county, when the city was unincorporated, had approved one or both of the boat docks that are encroaching in the Sixth Street right of way. I don't have the wherewithal or the skill.
I don't have the wherewithal or the skill to do a full-blown title search to find all of that information and would need legal assistance to verify the findings that we have found.
Is it possible to go and look at those docks and if it looks like they've been rebuilt over 50% that they'd have to be removed? Is that, is that not the case now? If they're destroyed, they'd have to be put back?
Well, that would-
Out of the right of way?
That would depend on what the county had approved and if there's any additional language there, which is, again, I'm really not qualified to-
I believe we need to check with FDEP and the county to see if and when there were permits issued for these docks, because I don't have that information here and I think that's what we need to know. And then we can-
But if there's docks, if they permitted the docks back in the 70s and they was destroyed last year, are they allowed to rebuild them back in the right of way or do they have to put them over on their property?
I don't know the answer to that.
So the city doesn't have any say-so and if it's in a right of way or?
Well, because this is submerged land, so this is submerged land.
And you don't know-
They are not infringing on our land that's upland. It would be if we continued our right of way into the water is where it crosses that section. So it's fairly complicated.
So if we wanted to put a dock on our property out into the water and they're in the way, then we would have, they could, they'd have to move them then at that point or?
Keep in mind too, these are just rights of ways. We don't generally own fee simple title to the lands. To put a dock in at most property, you have to show that you're the upland owner of the property. Here, I don't believe the city could do that, generally speaking, if these are just easements and rights of way. Now sometime, this, it can get very complicated. Anytime FDEP is involved, it gets very complicated because you can in fact have just that, property rights are a bundle of sticks and one stick potentially could be just the right to put a dock in. So we'd have to look at the particular easements like Mr. Destin suggested earlier and see if we had that particular stick in the property rights. So I'm not saying it's impossible. I think that we just have to look at it very closely and make a determination on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Can you clarify for me, is this the property abutting our Joe's Bayou property? Or is this slightly in a different location?
It's Sixth Street. Can you explain, it's, lead to the south of the Joe's Bayou property. It is on Joe's Bayou, but is not on our recreation area.
This isn't number 19 or number one that's on the sheet. I'm just trying to match problem areas with the numbers on the sheet so I can get a visual of where it is. Because my first thought is if this is property we have, why are we just not discovering this? And I can look up submerged stuff online right now, any of us can.
It's actually item number three on your map.
Which says Sixth Street, okay.
And I think there's a little bit of confusion. You tried to clarify it, Kyle, between easement right of way and ownership. So that's going to be really, Mr. Destin alluded to that. Also, we have to keep in mind of the customary use of these properties and how it's all taking place. And we have to take, you know, before we get all in this excitement because of providing waterway easements, we also got to take an intelligent, comprehensive look on how these properties have been used and what, how long these have been here and the history behind the use of those properties. Some of them, maybe there's an easement or a right of way, but they've never, ever, ever been used by the public. So we just, I just, we just need to take that into account when we're looking at these properties.
Of course. So on the map, if you could go back just for all of us as we're talking and to try to be helpful so we can get a good visual, on the first slide where you've got a list of 30 different properties and some are red, some are green, some are yellow, there's one right there at Joe's Bayou ramp that's in red. Is red indicating there's a problem? Yes, right?
Not on that slide. That slide is, has a different key. The first slide you're talking about, red is just right of ways. Has nothing to do with-
There it is. Okay, I got it. That's what was confusing because the different ones with different colors.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, thank you for clarifying. All right, thank you.
We'll wind it up with Ms. Abert.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that you, meanwhile, with Parks and Recreation, going to look at these easements, but you have to realize they're not really going to be a park or a beach or anything like that. So I don't, Parks Chair is here, you know, do you think it's part that all these properties are? Ms. Re-
Please.
Please come up.
Yeah, it's all your fault.
I know it is all my fault. Danny Trammell, 38, 23 Indian Trail. The problem with all of this is, and especially when Mr. Bagby said, "Send it to a committee", this whole issue has not been assigned to any committee. We have, as Parks and Rec, Harbor Lane, and that's historical because it was a park for many years before we found out we couldn't have a park and then we, so it's still part of Parks and Rec. But the other two, yeah, well, I know, but you see what I'm saying? It was just, it, so, and believe me, when the Marino Acres community brought all of this up and we have three accesses, we're not here to destroy the neighbor's property. We're not really here to make it a park, to advertise it to the, how many tourists do we have now? Millions of tourists we have? Because there's no parking there. First of all, you don't even have a, unless it's happened lately, you don't have a code that says you can have a park without parking. You don't have a pedestrian park code. We need one if you're going to allow this to happen. If you're going to allow this to be for neighborhoods to walk, you don't have it. You don't have such a thing. We have static parks, we have the active parks. What are you going to make it? So until you get that kind of direction, it's kind of hard to send it to somebody and have them make a decision. Because it's like, all of our committees are like you. Everybody's got a different opinion of what they want. So basically, yes, I think we need to look at these. Yes, I think they can be water accesses of some version, form, or fashion. But what? You know, and so personally, I thought a water taxi spot would be really good for every one of them. That's a form of transportation that goes with the transportation code. But we don't have any designation for water taxi stops on any of them. Even the one on Harbor Lane that we've been talking about for three years.
Would not your committee though? Ms. Tramm, wouldn't though, for your committee, wouldn't that be something y'all could propose?
Only, we are trying desperately on the Parks and Rec Committee to only get a handle on the parks and recs that are assigned to us, the park and recreation areas that are assigned to us. These aren't parks. Harbor Lane is assigned to us. These have been assigned to no committee to look at.
See, that's really, I did not realize that. I thought Parks and Rec would look at anything in town that could be green space, park space, recreation space, anything of that nature. I did not realize y'all had-
Well, because this, this, it was addressed in Parks and Rec. We brought it up to them in the beginning. And then it went forward to council. Once it goes to the council level, then you have to direct what anybody else does with it. And that's where we're in limbo. And to be honest with you, I don't waste the time of the Parks and Rec Committee bringing up stuff that's not part of what we have because we've got so much on our agenda already. We don't need it. But I think you're going to have to look at your budget, because I know we were given, for Harbor Lane, just as an example, we were given $25,000. Half of that was spent. Where'd the other half go? It's not in your budget. Where'd it go? Don't know.
Good point. I'm glad you brought that up.
You know, I mean, the citizens ask, if that's all we can spend on Harbor Lane, then let's go down and spend the rest of it clearing some of these others if we can, right there on Bayou. No direction. I mean, we can't make that decision. We asked for that, but literally, we can't make that decision. So there's a lot of questions here and a lot of direction that needs to go down before any of the committees can address this.
So let me ask you a question. If you've left to your own devices as the Chair of Parks and Rec-
I don't know if you want to say that or not.
Would you like to see that, that possibility of allowing y'all to look at more properties such as what we're talking about here tonight? Or would you prefer that go to rest with us or someone else?
Well, to be honest with you, the Parks and Rec staff, if you added about eight more people, we might have time to look at all of that stuff, to be honest with you. Because we literally just don't have the staff. I think Lisa will tell you. She's swamped. We're trying to get the committee active to help her do some of those things. Yes, we don't mind reviewing this. We certainly appreciate community development coming and bringing all these things to us and letting us know about this because there are opportunities there. But we really feel like until it's assigned to us, we're kind of overstepping our boundaries because it doesn't fit our criteria right now.
So I guess what I'm hearing is, is I'd be happy to see if we could assign it to you, but it sounds like you feel like you're over-
Lisa's going to kill me for that.
But I mean, it sounds like you're saying you feel like y'all have got enough on your plate.
No, no. I mean, if you want us to, if you want to run something by us and what do we think and this kind of stuff, that's one thing. But assigning this to us, you do, you do what you want to do.
Got you.
But I think, you've heard from your staff, it's going to be bigger than what a volunteer committee can do.
Thank you. I appreciate your honest opinion.
Thanks for coming up seeing me.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa for-
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bagby, I got you. I was going to wrap it up, but I'm going to let you make a comment and then we go from here.
Yeah, I guess, speak to the staff for a second, okay? Don't bring us a problem without a recommended solution, okay? You've done half your job and I love you guys and you know I'll do anything I can to support you. But you've, you've given us a half a loaf and that makes me sad because half of these properties are either a beach access, a harbor access, or a bay access. Actually, more than half of them are that. The beach accesses, it's not a park, you know? We need, we might need to improve the walkover or something like that, or we're going to have a park there once we get rid of the house on the other three parcels. I mean, 90% of this is not for the Parks and Rec. But there is some that probably should go to the Parks and Rec. So y'all should do your job and tell us, we got 30. Here would be our plan. Here would be the cost. Here's the ones we recommend sending to Parks and Rec to, you know, make a park or look at making a park and we'll get it into the CIP or we'll get it someplace. And have, have a plan. You guys know me, I like to have a plan and then I like for us to execute the plan. And the plan is the council giving some direction, the committees doing their job and the staff doing their job. And it just, we've spent 35 minutes talking about this, which we shouldn't have spent five minutes talking about this because we needed y'all to do just a little bit more work. So I'm just going to ask you, take it back, figure it out, stratify it. This is what we need to focus on. This probably needs to go, we need to recommend this go to Park and Recs. We need to just do this. And the staff needs to find out about the easements, find out how much it costs, find out all, all that stuff, all that information that the council needs to make a dad gum decision. So please do that and bring it back to us and don't take six months, you know, take three months. And some of it, I do think, I've got, I was going to wait till my time. I've got another park idea that I want to bring to the council. You and I talked about it. I was going to do it under my time and I think I'll just do it under my time because-
Thank you. Well, Mr. Bagby, I wish I'd have called on you first because you just gave the council, or the staff, the direction they were seeking. So there we go.
Done.
Done. You got your, you got your marching orders there. And I believe, if I look both ways, that we agree with that?
Direct city manager, right?
We don't have a direction because we don't have a motion, so.
Do we need to do a motion?
I can't give it to the staff otherwise.
Oh, we do it all the time.
I understand.
Right, city manager. Do it, Jim.
Is that a motion, Mr. Bagby?
That is a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Let's vote on it.
Any further discussion?
No.
Too late. Vote is unanimous. Thank you so much, Mr. Bagby and Mr. Destin. All right, city manager.
Item 4E is the route selection for the Zerby Calhoun Pedestrian Improvements Phase Two. Staff is looking for direction from council on options available. We have Mr. Smith.
Mayor, council, good evening. So Catherine is going to help me here. Thank you very much, ma'am. We, as we, just to get us up to date, we hired Baskerville Donovan to design the Zerby Calhoun Phase Two board, multi-use path, boardwalk under the Marler Bridge. So Baskerville Donovan has done some preliminary design. They have done surveying, some other work, site looks. They have met with staff and we have discussed the situation and we have come up with four alternatives that we are seeking your guidance on. The primary concern is the elevation difference between Zerby Street and US 98. So it is 20-plus feet. Options A, B, and C, all kind of cut off of Calhoun Avenue, right at or around the entrance to the sides Marino condominium complex, if I'm saying that correctly, or at least in that neighborhood. The benefits to the three lower routes are that you have less elevation difference. Now, there's a caveat here because two of those options aren't much. So you still have to go 15-plus of the 20-plus feet. There's quite a bit of varice between Zerby and where that, where we could cut over. The other benefits are is that if we do that, we have the less elevation, we don't have to run up along 98, which, you know, more noise, more exposure. We are less likely, if we stay lower, to be impacted if there's any bridge maintenance or work that needs to be done to the Marler Bridge. So it is getting some years on it, so there has been some work done there and that could impact us. If we stay lower, it probably does give us the best site corridor. That could probably be up to interpretation. Now, the cons though, especially for the Route A and B, so if you'll go on there, Catherine, and show me B, you can see those are quite similar where they leave Calhoun, it's just the path that they take across those vacant properties. So the cons are that although if you stay lower, you have all of these, you got less noise, you got more opportunity for pedestrian improvements or multimodal improvements, you're more, less likely to affect the bridge. But when you do that, you probably are going to have to require the most property or easements. So, you know, that property owner would have to work with us. You know, at some point in time, those properties will have to be developed or would be developed. So that would play into it as well. There is a substantial, there is substantial damage to the seawall along the bay. It is probably unsafe as it currently is. So that's something that buildings is going to be looking into. So that is Routes A and B. Route C is a slightly different variation of the lower path. The only difference is, is it would cut off before, and I'm not, I'm not sure which property, which, what the little lane is, but if, it's the first driveway, I believe, up from Zerby. And if you cut off there and there's, you can stay within right of way, at least for a portion, then there, it's relatively flat. So you actually don't have to traverse the 15 feet. Engineering-wise, when you think about what we want this to be in the future, that one makes the most sense for ADA compliance, for making it the most user-friendly to all types of users. Now, having said that, now that one is the, will require the most amount of acquisition or easement along the frontage of those three properties. or easement along the frontages of those three properties, including, you would actually have to cross the entrance to the Sides Moreno condominium complex. Now, if you move on then to Route D, you can see that this is the route that I think was looked at primarily during the last design phase. And it runs up along Calhoun, along 98, and then there's a series of switchbacks to get you back down the elevation. So that's one of the, the downsides is, you gotta go up the hill, and then when you get to the bridge to get back down to the boardwalk, you have to switch back to get back down. So the pros are that likely we can get all of that done within the existing right of way, so therefore that's the easiest route as far as easements or acquisitions or those other things that could be in the way. Now, having said that, it will be the hardest to find some way to get ADA compliance, which we likely won't get. It will, I've, there is a, I don't want to say a waiver, that's not the right word, but if the roadway, if you're not able to obtain it, and it's along the roadway, that's sort of the out on the ADA compliance. But having said that, then you've still got a path that people will have to walk up twenty-plus feet and then walk down twenty-plus feet. And I, I think overall that doesn't, doesn't prohibit them from doing it, but it doesn't encourage it. And then definitely not encourage a, all types or all, all people who would want to use that facility. So, you know, there's less right of way, but then when you get there, there's more noise, there's more exposure to the elements, you're gonna have less opportunity for pedestrian amenities because we have some room, but not a great deal, and you do have the elevation difference. So, and, and we asked, when, so when I, when we worked on this, I, I, we asked for a priority. So you'd say, hey, do B, C, A, and D in that order, and I don't, you don't have to do that. You could just say, hey, we, we prefer D, we're, we're fine with that. We kind of asked for the priority so that, you know, as we move along, because these are very preliminary, once we get out there and do more work, we may find that even what we thought we could do, we can't do for some reason or another due to the, we can't work with the property owner. And I know that, I do believe that was some of the issues in the past with some of the options. So we don't know. We don't know if that has changed. We might find utility conflicts or hazard, other hazardous material or something that would change those conditions. So just to give us a little bit of flexibility as we move forward, if you have a preference and a preference as to how you'd like to see those, whether we upper or lower, to just give us some guidance, but let me assure you that we will be back each step of the way, and as we get more information or we get more progress, to come back to you so that you can see the, see where we're at next.
Alrighty then, I got a list of folks that want to chat, so don't go anywhere, sir. Up first, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Don, and staff for putting this together. I really appreciate it. I have a few concerns, um, with some of these, and mainly, majority of the concerns are already highlighted with almost every single one of them that has to have acquisitions, has to have, um, property owners working with us. It's not, you know, possible or not safe, you know, the way it, you know, the way it is around it, it's not safe, you know, possibly. It's just, every single one of them, it just seems like it's not very, um, not a good option. And lastly, what's really confusing to me is there's no design. If the goal of it is to bring pedestrians to walk on it and go under the bridge, why don't we have anything coming up Cyber from all of our beautiful parking lots that we have put in to actually get the people to this potential boardwalk? Unless that's not the goal. Like, if I'm parking in the Zerby lot, I'm not gonna go down Zerby to Calhoun then to use this new thing. I'm gonna go straight up Cyber and use this new boardwalk. Is that, would that even be an option at this point to add to the design?
Based on the council's desire, absolutely.
Sure. I mean, I mean, ultimately, I'm, I'm really not in favor of any one of these, and that's just my opinion, I guess, because it's, it, I don't really see how they're really beneficial. There's, they're dangerous, there's easement possi, possibilities, property right issues, safety issues, and so, I, I mean, I just don't even see any of them that really are acceptable to put a pedestrian boardwalk, um, on it. So this is my, my thoughts.
Ms. Abert.
Well, to save some time, Kevin just said exactly what I felt. I, I'm not comfortable with any of these and fighting with residents to give us property, and, yeah, just, I don't see any of them to be feasible.
Mr. Braid.
Thank you, mayor. Route number A would probably be, in my opinion, would, would probably be the best route, but nobody would use it. Um, I mean, you're just not gonna walk all that distance just to, to get underneath the bridge. Um, I really don't like the route behind the store. Um, we're gonna have huge issues with the, the route crossing Sides Moreno. And Route number D, people would use it, but in my opinion, it's too dangerous putting those people up on the highway right there. So I don't know what the answer is. It, it may be better to do what Kevin was talking about, uh, go a different route. Um, like I said, D, we're not gonna get ADA compliance out of that one. A, Route Eight, is probably gonna be the best, but I, I just hate to build it because I don't think they're gonna use it, um, in my opinion. But that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Director Ranswell.
Thank you, mayor. I actually like Route C, and my question, I'll follow up with that, but my first question is, is there a reason why the route gets off the road and sort of cuts across all those other properties before it takes the westerly turn?
So that's where I was alluding to the fact that the elevation, right where, right where it comes off of Calhoun...
Yeah.
...is where the elevations start. So if we, if we proceed on up to where A or B comes off of Calhoun, we're actually traversing about seventy-five percent of the elevation difference between Zerby and US 98. So that's why we would, if we can or we could, you would come off before that so that you wouldn't, you could cut off that fifteen feet of elevation difference. So the roadway goes up, but the property stays relatively flat.
So that piece of property and the two below it, so the long one above and then that bottom one's dividing into two, are all owned by the same corporation? Have you had any discussions with them whatsoever? And do you know, is the house that is located just above this, is it inhabited or not?
So we did not want to reach out to anybody until we talked to council and got some of your direction. We didn't want to go out and start communicating until we saw where y'all were at. So based on your direction, then we will then either go out and start communicating with those folks and see if they'll talk to us, or back up and punt.
What is this up at the front? Um, and it's hard to see on this, but maybe those of you that are in this area a lot might know. I can't tell if that's just a parking strip thing there where the, it takes the northeasterly turn?
Other on the dog leg.
On the dog leg is, I guess, the, go to the right, go to the right.
Yep.
Go up slightly. Yeah, see there in the top right corner, there's like a, a cement-looking strip? No, keep going with your arrow to the right. Arrow, use your arrow to the right.
Other way.
Your other right. My right. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, in that, right there where the road turn, the path, potential route turns up, there's the, looks like a cement pallet in, in the green space.
At the elbow.
Yes, 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 right there. Is, what is that?
So there is a abandoned property there...
Okay.
...that currently has some issues. So that, that is all part of that. I can't remember right now. We were out there, but I don't remember if that was sidewalk or driveway or...
So...
I'm not sure what it was, but the house is on down to the...
Okay. What I'm getting to is with this all being the same owner, and it's a corporation that the city has done business with before, and if that's already vacated and has issues, it might not be as difficult to obtain, it might be easier to negotiate. So just my input. I mean, that's really all I had. I just, that's my favorite route because it is more wooded. I think people, that's right at the point where people would be like, eh, do we take it, do we not? Yeah, we can go ahead and take it, it's close enough. Whereas I think the other ones, they're gonna say, no, let's just go down this way, and then like the others have said, the one that's closer to 98, I can see people saying, nah, maybe not so much. And I don't know that we want to direct them that way.
We got a pretty good list. Mr. Destin.
Thank you, mayor. Um, of course, I'm pretty familiar with this area. Um, A, B, and C are not attainable. That piece of property that's the triangular that we just discussed belongs to some folks who intend to put something there. They have talked about a development order off and on for the last ten years. There's not a snowball chance in hell they're gonna give us that easement. So the only option that we have if we're gonna go forward with this at all is D, unfortunately. It will go up and use existing right of way. We don't have, to have an easement. I believe that we can put some improvements in place that would mitigate the closeness to 98 and some of the other issues we've talked about. Uh, there is a great deal of incline there that'll have to be addressed in some manner. That's what we have engineers for. But the only thing that we have that's doable right now is that. I've, I've spent the last few months trying to tamp down the revolution down in that area where the people that live in, in the condo sides are, are relevant, are ready to take to the pitchforks. And I don't think they'll get as excited about D. The other ones, they're just not doable. And so, you know, my, my recommendation would be to, let's see what kind of mitigation we can put in on Route D to address those problems, because that's the only option we have. Otherwise, a couple of the routes are gonna render that undeveloped piece of property undevelopable, which means we get to buy the whole piece, which I don't think we have money for in this project. Um, so I will, after everybody else has their turn, I will make a motion that we just tell Baskerville and Donovan to look at Option D and go forward with that, to come back with how we can address the issues that that route has.
Just make that motion.
Make that motion, yeah.
Okay, I will make that motion if, see if we get a second.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and second, and we'll continue the discussion with the people on the list, and I'm up next. And I don't know, Mr. Destin, if it's the captain in us or whatever, but B was the only one I saw that was remotely feasible as well.
D, no.
Uh, D, I mean, um, and if, if you notice with that one too, uh, that was brought up about the parking lots, well, what, Cyber comes right there. We could create a really nice, um, crosswalk. They could leave the parking lots, access it right there. They're not going down towards, uh, Buck Destin Park or any of the others. So, uh, it's just too practical not to consider it. So I, I support your, your motion. Up next will be, uh, Mr. Bagby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of questions for the staff. Is there a reason we, D is basically what was originally envisioned there when we, when we brought this idea up ten or twelve years ago? Is there a reason? What, what's the reason we discarded that original plan? Let me ask it like that. No, we solved the ADA. Ten years ago, we solved the ADA. It had a little zigzag back and forth, that's right. Ms. Trammell will be able to tell you, because she was the ADA expert on the council at that time. Is there a reason we discarded that?
Not that I'm worried. We just took a fresh start, fresh look, open eyes, and went forward.
Sometimes that's good. Um, okay. Because the other option, uh, nobody's gonna like, but you, you'll find out that I don't like palm trees because they're not native, and I do like tunnels, okay? The other option would be to put in a tunnel, and I would tell you to go down to the east end of 38 and Highway 98 at 30 Avenue where they are putting a, an absolutely gorgeous tunnel with FDOT, paying for most of it, not all of it. Uh, and that would be an option here also, and it would be ADA compliant. And they're gonna have it done in less than, what, twelve years we've been working on this? I can't even remember, so, yeah.
Jim, that's something that we have suggested to do right over there on Stallman...
Yeah.
...that they're looking at.
The water level is only four.
It's actually in the same vicinity, so the study that Bolkert did, which included the Geotech, shows, uh, the feasibility of a tunnel actually being very feasible. It's in that vicinity, just up the road just a bit.
And, and the way you saw, I heard Rodney mention the water table. The way you solve that is the same way Jay Odom solved that problem out by the Crab Trap, is you build the highway up. If you go back far enough, it has just a nice gentle slope because ninety percent, nine, probably ninety-nine percent of the people in this town don't know there's a tunnel underneath Scenic Gulf Drive going to the Crab Trap from Destiny East. And it is, so we can solve the engineering problem and the water table problem and all this. I'm just saying, uh, that would be the other option if we don't do D. Thank you.
Include, uh... For whatever you want.
Yep. I'll, I'll include that we look at that option and recommend in the motion.
And I'll include that in the...
Okay, we, we do have a, uh, a friendly amendment to the original motion, and it's approved. Uh, Mr. Smith, second time around?
Yeah, thank you. This'll be the end of it, too. Um, if this, what, what happens if, when we say D? What's the next steps, courses of action with the engineering firm after a night and, and staff?
So if the motion is D and look at option for the tunnel, I will go back, we'll go back to Baskerville and tell them to look at that, and they'll do the additional engineering work, survey, and whatever needs to happen to get that done. Now, if we add the tunnel, when I talk with them, that will be outside of the original scope, so I'll be back to you with a, yes, sir. Thank you, mayor.
So is, is going back to them just with D without even a tunnel, is that, is that additional cost to continue the next design steps or anything? Because we currently have the contract with them to do this and then the next part and all that?
Yes. So any, any of those options, primarily because the, the scope from one to two was sort of along that route. The information that we gave them would have suggested it would have been along that route. So if we vary from Calhoun, that's likely beyond the scope of what we gave them. So, but as long as we're in the vicinity, it won't be any change.
It sounds like...
Now, if we had to acquire property, that would have been a change because that wasn't in the scope.
Sure. And I take it from the ten-plus-years folks that were here a while ago, this is a project that y'all were talking about then, about an under, under the bridge study, gotcha?
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I mean, I'm fine with going with, with D, like they're saying. I think there are a lot of major issues with the ADA, the, the level of going, uh, you know, you, you, you share an example, or if I have my kid's stroller and I'm coming from the top to the bottom, it sounds like if I let go of that stroller, they're gonna go straight into Crab Island. Kind of how I took your explanation a little bit, which is scary. Um, and, and so, at the end of the day, if there's no additional cost just to get that next step, I mean, it's fine, but it might be id, ideally to focus on the tunnel up by Stallman and reallocate the funds one day before we go too far with this. That's not even a possible option, but I'm, I'll support this tonight for, if there's no additional cost to have that done, so.
Ms. King.
Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that as well. The, uh, it seems like, it seems like an acquisition of this, if there was even a possibility of an acquisition like this, seems like there's a, dare I say, a thousand other things that these properties would be great for. Um, but the, what's the, help me understand the issue with going behind the, behind the thing, because that's my biggest fear, is if I had a kid or if I was, you know, something, somebody got in a wreck there, our number-one deal is, is public safety, right? So, if, what kind of, what kind of safety measures are in place for D, Don?
What's wrong?
Or I'm asking, I'm, I, what I want to know is what's wrong with, what's wrong with B? I maybe missed that. And two, what's the, what's... I maybe missed that. And two, what's the, what kind of safety measures can we put in place if, if D is the only, is the only viable option?
So, the, the issues with whether, whether you did A, B, or C, is if we built, so let's say we got an easement, and we built the path, and the rest of the property wasn't developed. That can in itself be a safety issue, because we don't know what's down there, we don't control the whole thing. So, ideally, if you chose one of those others, you would want the property developed along with the path, so that you had all the enhancement that go along, that make you feel safe, the lighting, the, you know, you don't have vacant property and buildings and those type of things. If you do D, then, just from looking at it, I don't know of any way to get ADA compliance from, along Calhoun Avenue, within the existing right-of-way. Because the only way you can, the only way you can traverse that much elevation is through some sort of switchback or some other method. Now, what would likely happen, though, is again, we have, if the route itself is too steep, in which case this one, I'm sure it is, then you would just, it's, it's like a technical infeasibility study. So, you don't actually have to go rebuild the roadway and flatten it out in order to get ADA compliance, it's just not feasible. So, in this case, what we would have, now, you could say, well, what measure could we do? Well, we could do some bollards, or, I mean, I'm sure there's some things that we could do that would, as far as handling the grade, where it wasn't all at one, we can put a few flat landing, flat landings, I'm sure, along the way. So, there would be some things we could do, but it just wouldn't be brought into compliance. It still wouldn't be what you would say ideal for ADA. But we can do things to, to make it better. And at Bashville, they, they are well-adapted doing these type of projects, and I'm sure can come back with a, a solution.
One, thank you, sir. The, the, the overpass or the underpass that was spoken, that was all, I think that was about a month or two before we got elected to be here. And in my, and pardon my misunderstanding here, but, so we're, you're, Mr. Bagby, you're talking about an underpass, a tunnel in place of the Stallman intersection. So, you're talking about throwing that out the window. Am I right about that, or am I talking about two completely different projects? So, we wanna do, so we're, we're considering having an underpass, an undertaking of that magnitude here and at Stallman? That the recommendation?
You know, the month before you were elected was about 16 months before I was elected. So, I, I'm not aware of the one at Stall, I mean, I know we've talked about it before, before we put all the flashing yellow lights across Harbor, we talked about putting a couple of tunnels underneath Harbor Boulevard. But right now, tonight, we're just, this is the alligator in the boat. This is all I'm talking about, is either put a tunnel coming up there, or do the walkway. I don't, I'm not sure that you need to do both of them. Yeah.
I wasn't trying to be argumentative, I'm just legitimately asking, because I don't know where we left that whole, yeah. I don't know where we left that whole thing.
So, let me, sorry, I mean, Councilman Bagby, let me make sure I understand. So, I was sort of going with the tunnel that would have been on, under 98, and somehow trying to figure out how to tie that in. What I heard you saying, though, is this is not necessarily the case. This would be a tunnel along or near Calhoun.
Right. So, because I was not aware of the tunnel at Stallman. So, if we, yeah, yeah. So, that was well before I came back on the, well before I came back on council. If we wanna do the tunnel at Stallman, I think that's a great idea. You wanna do a tunnel at Stallman, and you wanna do the boardwalk down the side, and we did, I do remember we had switchbacks, and we did have landings. Ms. Trammell may have the plans, I probably got rid of those plans a long time ago. But, you know, and it had a nice little fishing pier, or bump, gazebo, bump out, whatever. So, yeah, it actually went out over the harbor, and that may have been how they got the slope to go, because it didn't just turn left right underneath the bridge.
So, my apologies, the ADA compliance that I'm concerned about is not, once we get over to the bridge, we would build the switchbacks or whatever's necessary to get down, and I think we can do that. The issue is from Zerby to 98 along Calhoun. That's where we would have the issue with not being able to get the ADA compliance.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. And let's just go ahead and take this to a vote, so we can just.
Oh, I didn't, I. I would, I would point out that.
You were on there, sorry, sir.
Yep. The, the exception is the way we'll probably have to go. And I would note there's always, there's already a sidewalk going down the east side of Calhoun. And so, the exception would work, in my opinion. The Stallman Tunnel wouldn't solve our problem, because it would come out by the community center and have to go down that hill, which has even more of a incline, or decline, probably. So, that wouldn't help us. And I would remind Bashville and Donovan that since they won't have to work on the three prioritized ones, that there really shouldn't be any change in the price at all.
Mr. Destin, can, would you be willing to add to the design of having a crossover on Calhoun to Cybert at this point, while they're working on this?
It would. Because then you're talking elevators and switchbacks.
No, not, not cross, crosswalk, crosswalk, I'm sorry. Crosswalk, just across the street on Cybert.
Oh, man, we're already making such a mess with traffic there.
No, let's just stick with the motion we got, and we can add, we can, we can make a separate motion. I know where you're going, Kevin. You're talking about getting from the parking lot to the approachway to the underground, below it. And I think that's something that would just almost be a no-brainer, that should be in the design, if we're talking about moving people from our existing.
I don't like no-brainers and just assuming, though.
Especially when you're talking about government, I'm with you. But that's, we can do that in a separate motion. So, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had plenty of discussion. Let's take this to a vote. And then, Kevin, I'll turn to you next, right after that. As have it, unanimous, so move Mr. Schmidt. All right. Take it away, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4F is a development of a citywide safety program. This comes from input from the council and from the residents about different intersections and roadways throughout the city. And again, we have Mr. Smith here.
Mayor, council, good evening. So, council and/or community has asked staff to evaluate the following areas for speeding and safety concerns. Is this something we've been working on for a while? So, the community has asked us to look at Third Street, Cybert Avenue, Spring Lane, Stallman Avenue, Legion Drive, Indian Bayou Subdivision, which is Country Club East-West, Indian Bayou Drive, and Dolphin Street. Those are all active speed complaints or safety. We've also been asked to look at Calhoun, Pine Forest, and all of those streets that make up the crosstown connector, which becomes Drive, Airport Road, Legion Drive, new section of crosstown connector, Azalea Drive, and Stallman Avenue. These in regards primarily to speeding concerns. During the process, we've been able to talk with multiple residents, we've talked to law enforcement, we've talked to emergency responders, we have observed those locations and collected data. Here is a map that sort of, or primarily shows the, the red lines or the areas that we currently have been looking at. I did go out and not just look at those areas, though. We did, I did, have been looking at the city as a whole. So, for instance, and I, I just kinda randomly selected these, I didn't go pinpoint anything, but this is Spring Lane. So, this is, this runs between Legion and Kelly. And so, there is sidewalks on one side of the road, five feet, very open, straight street. And as you can see, a van parked right across the sidewalk. This is common. This is Overstreet. Now, it does have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Again, these are either, right now, I've had, I'd have to go look back here, but I believe these are 11-foot lanes, again, very straight, very open environment. The other street and this one both, there is some street lighting, but not, not a lot. This is Planet Drive, no sidewalks, pretty, pretty, lots of trees.
We just walk on the roads there, sir.
Well.
It's really quiet. We don't need no damn sidewalks.
So, Mr. Mayor, I very much so appreciate that, because that kinda proves my point. That, that is sort of where I was getting to, and that is the way we tend to operate. So, I see this quite often, as I know everyone does. There are lack of neighborhood sidewalks. And now, keep in mind, when, when I, when, you know, primarily, the reason I've been looking at this is due to speed complaints and safety complaints. So, you know, we do have a lack of neighborhood sidewalks. We do not have a lack of vehicles who park in the sidewalks that we have. We don't have a lot of traffic calming. We really have a lot of straight, wide streets that do not really encourage you to slow down. A lot of the information I've gathered, it will not meet the current policies that we have for speed humps. Doesn't mean that we can't do those, it just means that, you know, for staff, it, it's very difficult. Overgrowth, dead and dying grass, and I say that partially, you know, one of the things, if you just do a quick Google search on safe neighborhoods, that's some of the things they'll mention is well-kept, groomed neighborhoods, you know, it does, it makes you, it makes you feel safe. As I've been looking around, I don't see a lot of community action programs, you know, Neighborhood Watch, Neighborhood Cleanup Days, a lot of those other things that, you know, law enfa, it's great when law enforcement is in your neighborhood, because they're seen. It's great when you do things in your neighborhood, because people see you, people know you care, those type of things. So, I know there's a lot of people that care, and I know there's a lot of people that pick up trash and do a lot of things. I don't see as much organized effort, though. So, I kinda made another map here, and as you can see, I didn't do much with it, but you, you get the idea, that although I have a lot of areas that I've been tasked to look at, if I look at everything as a whole, there's not a lot of difference. They all look relatively similar when we, when you get into the neighborhoods. You don't, I mean, it varies some, you, smaller sidewalk, one side, a few places, they might be smaller sidewalk, two sides. And we have a few neighborhoods, like Azalea, where there is a 10-foot sidewalk along the side of the road. So, I was able to talk to residents, and I've talked to many, I really have. You know, you, you go out and stop, and it's Destin, people are friendly, they'll come out and they'll start talking. And if I can't find the person that, that made the complaint, I can find the person who knows who made the complaint. I'm usually able to track them down. But the major complaint is speeding cars, and the major concern primarily is a lot toward child safety. So, whether they're playing in the yard or walking to school, that, that's, that's really the concern, and it, it's valid. I, I did talk to Major Howcomb with the Okaloosa Sheriff's Department, who is major now, he's got a promotion. But in all, limited resources, high call volume. And then, the primary crash, the high-frequency crash rate, or the crash, crash location is 98. That is where the majority of our severe and fatal crashes happen. And it's very hard for them to designate the few forces that they have, or to not prioritize that route. And I, and I, I get the, it is very difficult. Major Howcomb did mention that the city has the, you know, they can either hire more officers or make funding available for overtime or other things to, to help with some enforcement in other areas. I was able to talk to Chief Sasser with emergency response. Now, I will say, I did primarily talk to Chief Sasser in regards to speed humps, because of the impacts that those have on emergency response vehicles. So, if designed correctly, they are, and will, slow cars down. And so, since they will slow cars down, they will also slow down emergency response. And emergency, you know, Chief Sasser, you know, what, he says, what they say a lot is, moments, minutes matter and seconds count. And he gave me an example of, he said that after four minutes without oxygen, your brain does suffer damage. And one of the places that he actually used as a, an example was Indian Bayou. And he said, because it only has one way in and one way out, if they have an emergency at the end of that subdivision, he, he actually said, he said, I actually understand, folks. He says, you know, he has a vehicle. And he says, he often gets to the location long before his fire department comes, or before his truck. And he said, it's even hard for him to stand there when he can hear it and knowing they're coming. They can't get there fast enough. It's, it's very difficult. So, I didn't, I guess I wouldn't have understood that without talking to him. But, you know, if we put in enough speed humps to effectively control the speed, there is no question that we are increasing their response time, and it will have an impact, you know, what it is. But, that's the idea. So, facts. Cars are speeding. So, I've collected data, and, and they, they are speeding, and some of them excessively. There is no question about it. Speeding cars do impact neighborhood safety. There's, period. Even if it's a small percentage. So, that's what I've continued to say, I think overall, is that there's not a lot of people speeding, but it only takes one. Having said that, it makes it very hard for the law enforcement to catch that guy, because they're sort of random. So, one of the things I talked to residents, I say, well, when do you see the speeding? Well, it, it just kinda happens all the time, you know, it's, it's here and there, it varies. So, it's, you, you see kinda the difficulty in the enforcement part. Residents are upset and concerned, and people do need to slow down. There's just, no question about it. The safest solution is to separate them. Now, I think, Mayor, I appreciate your point that you made early, in that, you know, I, I believe we live in a community where that we still believe we should build up, use the streets. We should build a bike, or walk, or ride skateboard, or some of those other things that we traditionally grew up and enjoyed. And I, I really think that's, that's, that's what our community believes. Speed humps, speed limits, stop signs will continue to be a part of our program. So, let me make sure everybody understands, those, those things will be part of what we're doing going forward, there's no doubt about it. They will be a tool in our box. I think what we're talking about here is trying to put other tools in a box, to, to, to look at this at a much broader level and, and a more holistic view. So, you know, what is the problem? And it would depend on how you looked at it, I guess, but, you know, lack of multimodal infrastructure means that you have to walk on the street where the car is also at, which puts you at risk. So, the safest way, or the safest way forward is to separate those. You can't get hit by a car, I mean, you can get hit by a car anywhere. And as we know, many, many children, and, and the numbers are actually pretty high, it actually surprised me, there's, you know, how many children in the United States every year in the driveway, who are backed over by parents, who are, you know, there's, those things do exist. You know, but we, we need those facilities, whether it be a pocket park, whether it be a track around the basketball court where the kids can ride the bicycle. We need, we need to keep those folks who are parking across our sidewalks. We, that's something that, you know, so that people don't have to walk in the street, because it's not, you can't walk in the sidewalk, because you have to walk around all the cars. because it's not, you can't walk in the sidewalk because you have to walk around all the cars. Lack of locations within close proximity of a family's home where it feels safe for adults, children, and families to play and have an active lifestyle. You know, we want folks outside. We want them enjoying the sun, we want them walking and doing those things. Lack of organized effort to actively involve all stakeholders to develop, implement, and enforce neighborhood safety programs. I say that because this is something we have to do together, it's going to take all of us. If I had a one, well, we all wish we had that one fix. Behavior is a problem. That person that is driving too fast in your neighborhood knows it. He just don't care. Or he doesn't realize the potential, the danger. And I took this picture, actually, so I was out walking one morning, as I commonly do, down on Commons, it's about 5:00 a.m., and I saw two ladies come down and take a turn and go up Henderson Beach State Park Road there toward Walmart. And it is pitch dark. And as you can see there, right behind the car, there's two figures. Now, if they had a sidewalk, I suspect they'd be on it, but then, that's where, you know, through education, you know, reflective clothing. If you are going to walk, and you are going to walk at night or in early in the morning, you know, wear reflective clothing if you can't be on the sidewalk. And then, if there's not a sidewalk, you know, don't put yourself at risk. So, click it or ticket. Those are all things that, through educational purposes. Citywide safety program, community engagement, education encouragement, engineering enforcement, and emergency response, working together to improve the safety in our communities as a team. There are proven programs that exist that we can utilize information from, Vision Zero, Complete Streets, Built Environment, Traffic Calm, and there's a lot of resources out there that we can utilize to help us with the effort. So, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel, we can take the best from the parts we know. Community safety should be our top priority. I do fully and strongly believe that. But also, as much as I love our logo, we don't want to leave safety up to luck. And I think that overall, this is an effort that is worth undertaking.
I move that the City Council direct the City Manager to develop a citywide safety program to provide a framework for stakeholders to work together to address speeding and other safety concerns based on community engagement, education encouragement, engineering enforcement, and emergency response.
Second.
Got a motion, got a statement, Mr. Bagby. All righty, Mr. Smith.
As Mr. Bagby said, he doesn't need to talk, I feel bad for talking, but my biggest question, I love it, I love it.
Why wouldn't you vote for this?
Well, I'm voting for it, I love, I'm all about it, and I have something else on the side that I'm going to ask Dr. Ramswell later about something, but, Mr. Don, I mean, I love, do what?
During the meeting.
Yes, during the meeting, I'm sorry, yes, of course.
My biggest question, though, is, I mean, this is, I mean, this is a massive undertaking. I mean, it's a massive objective and goal and strategies and, you know, the whole nine yards, but have we gotten to the point yet of, after tonight, I mean, is it a Public Informations Officer who's going to be starting a campaign of doing this? Is it a Public Works and Safety Committee? I mean, staff-wise, I mean, this is, this is a job in itself for one staff member, I would assume, to hire just to do this thing, it seems like, so.
Now, the motion is the City Manager is going to develop a program, so they're, all we're doing is giving them to get this together.
Come back to us, all right, I'm excited, let's vote.
We will after Mr. Destin talks, because I'm not passing him up again. I still feel beat down from last time, Mr. Destin.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for your consideration. I think I agree with a great majority of what this says, however, there's some conclusions that I probably don't with, I don't agree with. Overall findings, cars are speeding. What's the problem? The root cause is not speeding vehicles. Those two statements don't go together. I think the root cause probably a great deal is speeding vehicles. And so, how do we get to that? We also have a conclusion here that the Sheriff's Department doesn't have the resources to enforce speeding in the neighborhoods. A very, very difficult conclusion to come to, but one that can be fixed. And the part that I have fought with, and Don and I have been arguing about this since I got back on council, was, is the effectiveness and the need for speed humps and for three-way and four-way stops. They're the only solutions we have to slow the traffic down short of a whole lot more law enforcement. So, I spoke to several of the Fire Commissioners who said, contrary to what the chief says, speed humps have negligent or no effect at all on our ability to respond. Part of it's true. If we were to put a bunch of speed bumps in a subdivision such as Indian Bayou, or any of the other neighborhoods, that would be a problem. We currently have a policy that addresses those areas. Those neighborhoods must petition with the majority of the folks who live there in order for us to go forward to put speed bumps there. So, that eventuality has been pretty well curtailed, and we fought that one 15 years ago. So, the only problem that I have with this is it appears to say that speed humps or three- or four-way stops are not a viable solution, and they are for many of our, for many of our straightaway streets that we know the problems are on. So, I would support the motion with a slight change, which would say, we direct the City Manager to develop a citywide safety program to provide a framework for stakeholders to work together. And I would add in that speed bumps and three-way, four-way, et cetera, stops are a viable option to be considered by all stakeholders. And if that's acceptable to y'all, then we'll go.
I don't have a problem amending my motion to add that.
Right. In that case, I can vote for it.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't imagine being in the back of an ambulance on a gurney and hit a speed hump at 45 miles an hour, and I sure wouldn't want to see that ladder truck the Fire Department's got hit one either doing 40 or 50 miles an hour. And I know they sent out something two, three months ago in Indian Bayou, wanting to know our opinion on speed humps, and I believe it overwhelmingly, people denied them and didn't want them. And now, see, it's in front of the City Council, want us to do something about it, so, I don't know, I'm not a big, big speed hump guy myself, I mean, I know some people that 0 to 60 in 4.4 seconds is, they're going to make it between each speed hump, doing it pretty fast, but, I don't know. I just want to, I don't want to go to throw in speed, speed humps or bumps around a neighborhood, especially mine, when the neighborhoods already spoke, and best of my knowledge, they don't want them. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Bagby.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, thank you for adding Dolphin Street, I saw that was just by the attalics, it was the last minute added, and we appreciate that, out in Crystal Beach. Number two, I think, I get a little, I'm going to vote for the amended motion, but I get a little nervous when we start directing staff into a particular solution, because we all know the difference between a speed bump, which is about that high and about that wide, and a speed hump, which is three to four inches high and about six feet wide, oops, and a speed table. And so, I just get nervous when the council says, but I want them to look at all that stuff, so if they didn't think they were going to look at it, shame on you. I thought they were going to look at everything, so I'll vote for it, I just, I want you to look at everything, it's not just humps, bumps, tables, three-way stops, four-way stops, everything, to make it safer.
And that was my intent, and as I, I'll repeat myself, we don't put speed humps in subdivisions unless they meet the criteria that is, and that means the majority of them have to want it and sign a petition asking for it. So, putting speed humps in subdivisions over the objection of the people that live there is just not a possibility. And I would point out that as the ladders and the emergency vehicles go down the road, they slow down before they go through intersections, they slow down at stop signs. So, there is a degree, and I would not put anything in that I would think would cause safety concerns to those folks, so that's not the object of the petition.
I have a follow-up question, actually, building on something Mr. Destin just said. Did we not, a few months ago, decide to put in a speed hump or a speed bump, whatever it's called, down in some neighborhood that Mr. King had recommended, and it was without approval of someone? And I thought that we had the authority to say, if we want to put one in, we're putting one in regardless of whether a neighborhood approved.
No, that was the Pine Street area, I think Mr. Don brought that back to us after the fact, or did the research, went out there, and you can probably expound on that, Mr. Don.
We did not make a decision on Pine Street.
I'm in. So, can't we, if a neighborhood doesn't request one, or even if they vote no, but we deem it an urgent enough situation, can't we overrule and put one in anyway?
I'm going to go ahead and take this to a vote, I don't think anybody has that answer, Dr. Ramswell and Mr. Destin.
I thought I'd gotten that answer in email with the stack of paperwork from you, Mr. Smith, and someone else, that was regarding Indian Bayou.
I think that the policy stands as far as what staff can do, and then, what council can do is up to council.
That's a very tactful response.
Yeah, that was pretty good, wasn't it? Mr. Destin, some of the new three-way stops that we have put in at your request, and at Dr. Ramswell's request after the accident on Main Street, we've all seen the benefit of those. And the good thing about three- and four-way stops is the Fire guys can run those stop signs, so they work really good. Let's go ahead and take this to a vote, we have a motion and a second, amended motion and a second. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Don, one thing in your presentation, you know, like our neighborhood, there's limited access to the neighborhood, and so, we don't have, and we don't have those long straightaways per se, but there's other areas that do, so, like Indian Trail is one of the raceways, because I ride my bike on that all the time, and those are big, giant lots, and that's something maybe we could look into as far as provide multimodal sidewalks along there. They've got a sidewalk along portions of it, but it's one of them old-school three-footers, can't even skate on them. All right, let's go 2G, sir.
Thank you, sir. Just a brief follow-up on the last item, I just want to make sure everybody knows that there's no budget currently assigned for that project, there is $100,000 assigned for next year's budget, so assuming that we approve it on the next, at the next two budget hearings, then we will have $100,000. And I can instruct Mr. Burgess to bring this before the Public Works, Public Safety, and have the Engineering Division help him brief them on this project so they can help bring it up speed.
Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but something that Ms. Trammell mentioned earlier that, if I could ask Ms. Strickland to look into for Thursday, was the other half of the Harbor Lane funds that they didn't get, if that's something?
Yeah, there was never a project set up, there was a motion made to apply approximately $20,000, $25,000 in a previous fiscal year. The budget didn't flow forward, and all I have is a report on exactly how Lisa told me how she spent the funds at the end of Harbor Lane. But other than that, no project was set up, no budget was adopted for this fiscal year nor for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Just quick reminders, Chapter 164 meeting number two is tomorrow, September the 8th, 8:30 a.m. at the Destin-Fore Walton Beach Convention Center on the island. And budget hearing number one is Thursday, September 9th, in this room, beginning at 5:30. And then, I believe we may have some board and/or committee appointments that need to take place tonight, and I didn't know if we wanted to move those forward at this time.
Nope, let's go ahead and do them right now, because we'll require a motion and a second and a vote for these appointments.
I'll nominate Patty Brown for the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Whenever you fill out one of those volunteer forms, you have no room to run. We'll take a vote.
Does she still have an active lawsuit?
Against the city?
There is a pre-suit Burt Harris claim that has been submitted by Ms. Brown and Mr. Troop related to a property down in Crystal Beach. It is not active litigation at this time, it is in the pre-suit stage.
Hey, Ray, pull that vote back, please.
Yeah, it wouldn't be right for me, because I know I brought this up once before when there was a potential nominee, and I brought up the fact that there was litigation, so I would want to make sure we're consistent, yeah.
Yeah, so I was a little premature there, so are you guys ready for a vote, or is any further discussion on that nomination? Okay, all right, no further discussion, we'll take a vote now. Eyes have it, so moved.
I was told just before this meeting that there may be a brief road closure on Airport Road tomorrow morning.
We have one more, one more nomination, go ahead, Dewey. We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion about Mr. Wagner? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so moved.
For the record, I want to clarify, so the first instance there was active litigation, in this instance, there's no active litigation, is that?
That's correct, we are in the pre-suit stage, so, for instance, like with the short-term rental pre-suit Burt Harris cases, you did settle out many of those before there was litigation, and as contrast with the fishing fleet case, that did not settle out before litigation, they did go ahead and file their complaint, and we were actively litigating that case. So, that's kind of the two routes on how that thing can go.
So, that's why it was okay for Patty Brown to be?
There's no technical rule that even if there's active litigation, that the person cannot be appointed, you know, I think it's just a choice of counsel.
Yeah, I think.
I thought we were saying that we couldn't put people in that were in situations with the city, so I took what you said in the wrong direction, so that's why I voted no.
You know, it's probably not advisable if there is an active litigation.
I'd like to officially change my vote to yes.
We'd have to reopen the vote, we can certainly do that, Dewey.
I got a motion to reopen the vote, and I have a second, we have to vote on that motion first. That's, we're voting for, on that motion. The vote is unanimous, so moved, now entertain another motion.
Make a motion to put Patty Brown on the Board of Adjustment.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none?
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a five-minute recess before we get into our public hearings. into our public hearings. [applause]
I was told just before this meeting that there may be a brief road closure on Airport
We have one more, one more nomination. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion about Mr. Wagner?
I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a five-minute recess before we get
I was told just before this meeting that there may be a brief road closure on Airport
We have one more, one more nomination. We have a motion and a second.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting, and our city manager has one more announcement, maybe two.
Yep, I just wanted to mention that there will be some brief delays on Airport Road in the morning, as DWU does some repair work, should not be more than 15 to 30 minutes of delays out there. And finally, I did want to thank Mr. Smith. This is his last official council meeting, I believe. I believe we appreciate what you do and what you've done for us, and we wish you the best of luck in the future.
Appreciate it, sir. All righty then, tonight, we do have three public hearings. And this is Kyle, Mr. Bowman's time to shine. Sir?
I hope I live up to those lofty expectations. Yeah, we got three quasi-judicial hearings today, so there's going to be a lot of swearing in here. First one, we've got 5A. We've got NGM Enterprises, Inc., on behalf of RW Management Limited, is requesting approval for a major deviation to an existing major development order. The project is located at 34898 Emerald Coast Parkway. The property is approximately 0.70 acres and is currently the location of the vacant Edwin Watts Golf Shop. The applicant is proposing a new plus-or-minus 2,381-square-foot, single-story restaurant with a drive-thru, along with the associated infrastructure. And at this time, if I could get the applicant to please stand and raise their right hand, along with any member of staff who plans on testifying, and if there's any member of the public who plans on testifying, please stand and raise your hand as well. All right, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth? All right, thank you, guys. At this time, I will go down the line, starting with Kevin here, and please let us know if you have had any ex parte communications related to this matter.
No ex parte communications. None.
No communications.
No communications.
None.
No communication.
No communication.
No, sir, no communications.
All right, thank you, council and mayor. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Zenguzi. We also have the land use attorney available virtually.
Thank you. I have my planner here who can quickly run through the project, and Senior Planner was with us this evening. He'll run through the project and take any questions from City Council.
Thanks, Louis. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Kyle stated, this is for the Panda Express. It is a proposed plus-or-minus 2,380-square-foot, single-story, fast-food restaurant with a drive-thru. The parcel is zoned commercial general and has a commercial general future land use map designation. It is compliant with our Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan elements. This is a conditional use within the commercial general zoning district. As you all know, this was approved by the LPA, or the conditional use was approved by the LPA in January, as well as approved by City Council in February. As I stated earlier, the project as proposed does comply with all of our Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan elements, such as, but not limited to, height, setbacks, open space, parking, stormwater, landscaping, et cetera. So with that being said, staff does recommend that City Council approve this major deviation to an existing major development order, and the applicant is here if you all have any questions for him or myself. Thanks.
Mr. Applicant, if you have any presentation you'd like to make, this would be the appropriate time.
All right, seeing how this is a public hearing at this particular time, I'll open it up for any comments from the public. Looking around the room, I do not see anyone wanting to come to the podium, so I'm going to close the public comment portion of this public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make the motion. I move that the City Council approve Panda Express, a major deviation to an existing major development order.
I have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion on this project?
I'll add that my family is very excited to see its top.
So then it's appropriate that you made the motion, ma'am?
Yes.
All righty, seeing no further discussion, let's take it to a vote. The vote is unanimous, so moved. Congratulations. I'll be hitting you up for a Little League sponsorship, just wait. All righty then, sir, take it away.
All right, Mr. Mayor. We've got Item 5B, and this is Edwin L. Stanford, on behalf of the Fletcher-Lisa Trust, requesting a planned unit development and major subdivision preliminary platting approval. The project is located at 318 Seibert Avenue and 412 Kelly Street. The properties total approximately 2.52 acres, and will consist of a gated, a private gated development with 12 single-family residences, along with the associated infrastructure and platting. And this time, if I could please get the applicant to stand, raise your right hand. And again, any member of staff who plans on testifying, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth? All right, thank you, guys. This time, again, starting with Kevin, we'll go ahead and see if we've had any ex parte communications.
No, I'm not.
I may have.
Mr. Johnny, if you did, just disclose the nature of it.
Did we speak on the phone? We did speak on the phone, and the nature of...
I just talked about the, I was going to ask for an opinion on the project, like, follow-up.
Yeah, and the nature of the conversation basically was like what Mr. Sir was saying about telling me about the property or the project. And I happen to, I believe I was with my father, and he was, most of the communication was between the two of you, but I was certainly there.
So in some, Mr. King had some communications with the applicant just related to the general nature of the proposed development. Is that accurate, Mr. King?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That shouldn't prove to be an impediment to this process, so.
No communications.
No communications.
No communication.
No communication.
No communication.
No communication.
All right, seeing that we had the only one ex parte communication, that shouldn't prove to be an issue, I'll go ahead and turn this again over to Mr. Zenguzi. And again, we've got the land use attorney available virtually.
Yes, we have Principal Planner here to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We do have a proposed planned unit development before you today, and it does consist of 12 single-family residences. So the Comprehensive Plan does designate this as low-density residential village, and the current, I'm sorry, low-density residential, and the current zoning is low-density residential village. Going into several aspects of the project, the PUD nature of the project does afford, the way it's proposed, a reduction in lot size, a reduction in lot width or lot frontages and lot depths. And then it also incorporates a private street that is reduced in total width for one way. You enter in off of Kelly and exit onto Seibert. And so those are the two main deviations from code that we have looked at for this project. Now, when looking at total density, the maximum allowed is 5.81 dwelling units per acre, and that what is provided is at 4.76, so it does not exceed the maximum allowed density of this zone. Of note, the purpose of a PUD is to allow for innovative design in a unique fashion in a constrained property. The four objectives of the PUD are, one, the preservation of sensitivity to significant environmental topographical features; two, the accommodation of a mixture of uses on a single parcel of land, made internally or externally compatible through use limitations, sign control, building orientation, buffering, or other techniques which may be appropriate to a particular development proposal; three, the accommodation of a juxtaposition of buildings with exceptional setback or separation distances made internally and/or externally compatible through strategic landscape and spatial design; and four, the accommodation of comprehensively planned and phased development or redevelopment project involving multiple ownerships, which provides for interrelated uses, circulation patterns, both vehicular and pedestrian, building orientations, parking areas, architectural motifs, signs, open spaces, vistas, amenity areas, and like features which positively contribute to the area being developed or redeveloped in the city. When applying those objectives to this proposal, none of the proposed uses or proposed designs meets those, meet those objectives, and therefore, staff cannot give a recommendation, and therefore, the responsibility of determination is upon City Council. And with that, I will stand for, turn it over to the applicant and wait for questioning.
All right, do you have anything that you'd like to add, sir?
Please make those handouts. Do you have a spare one to give to the city clerk by chance? Okay, good. If you could hand one to Ray over there as well. The staff, have you seen this handout?
Have not.
Do you have an extra copy for city staff as well?
It's our land use attorney, seen this?
Kim, have you seen this?
No.
Sir, when you talk, just make sure you speak into the mic and give us your name and address, too. Yep.
Yep, just name it.
My name is Brad Fletcher. I live at 9 Wikiwachi Circle, which is at the back of Indian Bayou, which I spoke about today, Rodney, they're in the front, but we're in the back. Yeah, so, anyway.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Yep, go ahead. This is your presentation.
Right. We had envisioned, this is, I gave you the, kind of the maps as to where it's at, and I've got some pictures in there also of the neighborhood. City staff has actually used the word blight in this juxtaposition of Kelly and Seibert. You can see some of the You can see some of the pictures down there. I own, it's a strange lot that was platted years, 100 years ago in Destin. It's 100 feet wide, but it's 500 feet deep, which is the primary lot. So I bought it 10 years ago with the hope of developing, and at that time, the city stopped doing cul-de-sacs. So they said, until you can break out onto Cybert, you can't develop your property. The property did come up for the, the exits on the Cybert did finally come up. So that's been the genesis of where this pud's coming from. And the problem and the reason I'm here is that the, we have to construct a right-of-way to access the entire property. And the right-of-way has a great many strictures of depth, width, you know, adds here obviously some of the technical questions. But that's really what effects are, being able to do the project without being here in front of the city, which is why I'm here. So I'm envisioning, this is an anchor project for that area. You can see that I'm surrounded by non, I'm surrounded by non-conforming uses. I've got trailer parks on either side of me. I've got duplexes. I've got six-plexes. Teresa obviously knows the area. Oh, okay. So, and I, and at one time, the city, I actually removed a crack house from my property on the 100, you know, at the request of the city. They were doing meth and crack in the trailer and the building. That's about where Lot 11 was. And there'll be a duplex that was built in the 30s that would also be torn down. But as I said, my neighbors are a random mix of warehouses, lots, trailer parks, duplexes, six-plexes, and other non-conforming uses. So anyway, and the other part of that, too, we had that whole conversation about safety with the city tonight. We want to do a gated community in there, and the right-of-way wasn't supposed to be a problem for me because I want to make that part of the architectural presentation, and that I want to do pavers. And we've got the sidewalks in there, and it'll be a place, I want front porches. You can see the logo is the rocking chair. I want to do the cottages with the front porches. I'm building a neighborhood to anchor that neighborhood. I think it'll change that neighborhood from, from one to whatever, Teresa. Anyway.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Fletcher. Is this a representation of what's going to be there?
Yeah, you see the front porches with the, that's what I'm looking to do, is the front porches. That one actually doesn't have a metal roof. I do want to go with the metal roof looks that you're seeing everywhere done. But the entire neighborhood itself is occurring. Randy Wise came in and these are that, this is the 300 feet that I bought, and based on the vaguities. Okay. The entire neighborhood is being developed. You've seen the houses go down there. Randy Wise took the 300 and made them into four lots there and built. And he built them toward the back of the units, and there is a sidewalk that goes across in front of it. So the houses are built to the back rear setbacks. So that's kind of what I'm proposing. It'll look like these houses, although we've got the actual measured-out lots or different sizes in there. So it's actually, it's being built throughout the whole neighborhood, across the street. Done the same thing. They took the 300 piece, and it's been developed across the street. I don't know who did those houses. I just knew that Randy did these. But it's been done here, and of course, these Schultz's.
They resemble the same, so I'm wondering if it's the same builder because they're...
Oh, it's possible. It might be Randy Wise.
There's a few, there's a few different builders over there, where you're talking about.
And I know Schultz's are building a bunch in there, too. Yeah, anyway. And there were some, and it's interesting, the city just made, one of the houses right here, build a fence to hide their junk, so. Well, that's nice. That increased the property values down there, I'm sure, but yeah, so, yeah.
All right.
Oh, I don't know who it is. Oh, okay.
You don't need to know.
Oh, okay.
We do.
My apologies.
Is there any questions for the presenter at this moment? Okay, I'll ask for a motion after we close the public, the public hearing portion. Mr. Brayden.
What is the square footage of most of these?
Of the houses?
Yes, sir.
1,800 to 2,200 square feet.
That four two-story houses?
Yeah, the four two-story houses on that side, that's what the retention pond is. Obviously, this is infrastructure, so we've got a nice retention pond in there more, actually larger than it has to be, but we can carry a lot of water in there also.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Saber.
Real quick, just what is your price that you're trying to, I realize the wood and things are different. Is, do you have a projected area in price range?
We were shooting for 425 to 460 in there. The brick houses that Randy built, they just sold into fives. So it's so fluid, I, you know, that's where we were. It's moved. I actually started this pud 27 months ago. And I ran into staff changes, COVID changes, you know, just, it has been a struggle to get to this point. But we are here. But, yeah, 27 months ago.
Well, hopefully after the vote, you'll have a sigh of relief. Dr. Ranswell.
Thanks. Did, Mr. King, did you hold up a picture that was what the expected?
Second page.
I don't know why. I looked through this thing twice. Oh, is it, I don't know unless it's stuck. Oh, it's stuck. It's stuck. Okay. No, I appreciate that. I was trying to calculate the lot size. It looks like, was it .0123? Or something very small, and I was trying to figure out.
The lot sizes are small in that they're...
Microphone, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, the lot sizes themselves are small, but we actually have on one of the, the plaques, the actual building platforms with the setbacks around it, they do fit. It's tight, but they do fit. And that's why I was saying that the current houses that Randy built, they tight, they're tight, too. They're back against the back of the setbacks, and they have huge front yards with that sidewalk running across from it. And that's what we've done, but we've turned that sidewalk also with the brick pavers to go across. You know, we're building a neighborhood, is what we're doing, obviously.
Yeah. No, it does. And I was just, based on what the information was that we had in our packet, I was just trying to calculate the square footage of the houses because it looks like the lots are about, what, 100 or 90 by like 55?
They're different various sizes. Some of them actually almost meet code. They're 7,000 square feet. It just depends, because of the road and the setbacks on the road, it's kind of problematic. But yeah, the houses do fit onto the lots.
Do you have any that are going to be three stories?
I've never heard of that before in Destin, but, I mean, that's possible, but it's just ones and twos is what we had proposed.
Okay.
Do you ask that for a reason? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I was just wondering, to try to get the square footage of 18 to 2,200 per unit.
The two stories, the two stories would be 1,000 square foot on each story, so that gives you the 2,000 square feet.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was just trying to get a visualization of what you're doing, and this image helps, and then just trying to stack it and kind of see.
One last question for you, sir. Mr. Schmidt.
Oh, thank you. How does the decision come about for the entrance and exit of the one-way?
Well, we originally, we were hoping with the LDC to have the one-way street actually be smaller. But there's no provisions in the LDC to take the right-of-way down to 30 feet. We were trying to put more green area, but that's just, that was our idea to do the gated community.
I apologize. Maybe I asked it the wrong way. Why, why enter on Kelly and exit on Cybert versus enter on Cybert and exit on Kelly?
I think he said it incorrectly, actually. Cybert to Kelly, right?
Kelly to Cybert.
Oh, it's Kelly to Cybert. My apologies.
I was just, what, how do you come with that direction versus the other direction? I'm just curious because, you know. You know, when you pull out of certain areas, is there the curve there? People go speeding around that curve if they're sitting there trying to pull into the neighborhood? Is there safety issues pulling in? Why, just, how do you come about that direction of entrance?
Honestly, this has so much history to it, and so many people on the city side. I don't remember the conversation. We've had four sets of staff on this since it started. And by the way, the general dimension of the footprint for the building is about 2,400 square feet. So if you take off 400 square feet for a garage, then you're around 2,000 square feet. So you, and 7,500 square feet, which is the LDC requirement, is about .17 acres, and these lots are 1.123 to 1.145.
That's, that was the original plan, yes?
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, very, very much. This is a public hearing, so at this portion of the meeting, I'm going to go ahead and look for any public comments. And then, so you can have a seat. Thank you very much. And is there anyone that wants to speak from the public on this development? I do not see anyone wanting to approach the podium, so Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mayor. I had one more question, if you don't mind. These driveways, is there going to be enough room for an F-150 to park in the driveway without blocking the sidewalk?
We have a standard 20-foot front setback that's required by the Land Development Code, so we meet that standard. What's an F-250 with a king, I mean, it may be 22 feet, right? 21 and change. So will there be enough room? Probably, but it depends if, it could be overhanging by, you know, 12 inches, honestly.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, I'm going to make the recommended motion. I'm going to move that the City Council approve the planned unit development and major subdivision identified as Destin cottages and the associated land development code deviations.
I second.
All right. I have a motion and a couple of seconds. And first up, Dr. Ranswell, you have any comments?
I have some questions for staff, actually. So my first question was, did this go to LPA? Because I didn't see any LPA minutes in here, nor on any of their past several agendas.
The current process right now is that these types of projects do not go to the LPA. We're hoping to make that change in the new LDC code.
Okay. And then my next question is, I noticed that there were no impact fees being calculated, and I'm wondering when those are going to be calculated?
We'll calculate impact fees at time of building permitting.
Is that standard?
Yes, correct. Correct. It is, yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you. Oh, well, actually, I did have one more, but this is, I hate to assume anything, but fire truck access, there's plenty of room for them to... Got it. Great. Okay. Thank y'all.
Mr. Destin.
Just one question out of curiosity. The object of a pud is so that you can deviate, deviate from the LDC. And you were trying to maybe put a two-way street in just now, or you didn't ask for that?
Honestly, again, this goes back several years now, and we have tried to configure this property in such a way that it enhances the area and addresses traffic calming, things like that. This was maybe an idea that was many, many months ago, a year ago, maybe 18 months ago. So it is something we looked at, and we ended up putting this, you know, into our design. We talked with Matt Taylor about it and, you know, and then gating it. I think it's going to look nice. It's going to act like nice. It's going to perform well. It's just a matter of, you know, retracing my steps to the conversations we had. There was influence, and I mean, you know, we've got a great relationship with the city staff, and there's always influence along the way, but I can't specifically point to the day when we said, hey, let's, let's do a one-way road, yeah.
Might have been one deviation too many, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Destin. Mr. King.
Thank you, sir. Just one quick question. The, well, a couple, a couple of things. The density here, are you building right up to the specified density? You're less, and I'm sure that's in here. I just missed.
It's 14.5, it's 14.6 or kind of something.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Last time I was here, I was introducing winning football teams, so, anyway. It's 14.67 is what it calculates out, and we're building 12.
That's perfect. And I just wanted to say, I live about six streets over from here. I'm in this area constantly. I think this is a step in the right direction. It's a wonderful product. If it resembles anything close to what you've got us here, nice work. Thanks for bringing that to our side of town.
Thank you, Johnny.
Alrighty then. We have a motion, and we have a second, and let's take this to a vote. Drum roll, please. You can go ahead and kick, you can go ahead and kick that light off, and hopefully you don't ever have to come back up here again. The vote is unanimous, so move. Congratulations, gentlemen. Only if you bring one back.
We'll meet you at Panda Express when it opens.
Can you gate the community outside of your area?
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We are not done yet, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one more public hearing to undertake, and that is Item C. Mr. Bowman.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, last but not least, we have Destin Water Users requesting approval for a major development order. The project is located at 14 Industrial Park Lane. The property totals approximately 32.78 acres and is currently the location of Destin Water Users. The applicant is proposing to demo the existing metal buildings to the west of the training building and to construct three new buildings: warehouse building, departmental storage building, workshop, and an office building, and a parking garage within the existing DW campus to be utilized by the existing staff. This time, if I could get the applicant DW to please stand and raise your right hand, and any member of city staff who plans to testify, please raise your right hand. And if Shane or any other member of the public wants to testify, you can raise your right hand as well. All right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth?
All right. Thank you, guys. Again, starting with Kevin, we'll go ahead and see if there's any ex parte communications.
None.
None.
No communication.
None.
None.
No communications.
No communications.
None.
Thanks, Council and Mayor. And again, we'll go to Mr. Zenguzi, and we've got land use attorney virtually here as well.
Again, we have our senior planner here to make a presentation.
Thanks again, Louis. Evening, staff and mayor. Maybe we can wrap this up. As Kyle said, this is a major development order for the Destin Water Users campus. There is already a campus existing, as you all know. However, this project would be consisting of demolishing a few buildings that are to the west of the existing training building and constructing a warehouse building, a departmental storage, an office building, and a parking garage within the campus. The future land use map designation for this parcel is institutional, as well as the current zoning designation. So this is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code use and intent. As before, this project also complies with all LDC and Comprehensive Plan elements. And just to note, there, the, this is for the existing staff at the Destin Water Users, so the traffic concurrency was deemed de minimis by the traffic engineer because it will not generate any new trips. And with that being said, staff does recommend that City Council approves the Destin Water Users campus improvements and major development order. And the applicant is here, as he stated, to answer any questions or myself.
I'm Lockwood Wernet, 10 Country Club Drive East, Destin.
I'm Monica Wallace, 710 Bayou Drive, Destin.
One of the things that was not mentioned, after Hurricane Michael, we looked at how vulnerable we were. And a lot of the buildings predate the Andrew Building Code. So we figured that if we were to have had a Michael hit, we would have been picking up pieces and parts to repair the water system throughout Keller subdivision. We had staff that were sleeping in our training building, and the facilities would not have withstood the hurricane. So we realized we needed to harden our facilities. So what this project does is it goes in and takes several older structures. It helps us rebuild those structures to 160 mile-hour wind code requirements. It gives us the opportunity to respond. It gives us a safe place during a storm, and so that we can be prepared about our business of restoring in case of an emergency. It is located within the middle of our campus. It encompasses about four acres of the 32 acres that are there. You've heard staff, we meet or exceed all the requirements, and we ask that you move the staff motion to approve our project. Monica and I are here to answer any questions you have.
All right. I do have somebody lined up. Dr. Ranswell?
I will make the motion. I move that the City Council approve Destin Water Users campus improvements, a major development order.
I second.
Stay right there, Lockwood. I got a motion and a second. Mr. Brayden, you're up first.
How much is my water bill going to go up?
The money to build this is within the existing rate structure. We've already, we already borrowed the money back when rates were lower. Well, they weren't lower as though, but we already have it, so it won't be reflected in future rates.
Thank you.
All right. Got a little bit ahead of ourselves. This is a public hearing, so we'll do that. After we finish our discussion, before we go to a vote, in case you guys have any other questions for... go to a vote, in case you guys have any other questions for Destin Water Users representatives. Seeing none, y'all can have a seat, sir, ma'am. And this is a public hearing, so at this portion of the meeting, I'll look towards any public comment. There's not many folks in the room, and nobody's got up to run to the microphone.
It's empty.
So I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this meeting, and if there's no further comments, we'll go ahead and vote. The vote is unanimous, so moved, even though he didn't answer your question, Mr. Braden. He dodged it like the guy in Matrix. All right, let's, well, I'll entertain a motion for Item 6, A through P.
Mayor, I'd like to pull Items B through I.
Aw, man. You didn't get those answered prior to the meeting?
Well, this is a follow-up on a prior problem.
Well, we have a, we have a request to move Items 6B through I from the consent agenda, and that requires a supermajority vote, correct?
Hang on a second. No, any, any council member has the right to pull a consent agenda item. So if Ms. Abert wants to amend her motion to-
I'll amend a motion to make those items pulled, and the rest to be approved.
Okay, so the motion should read, pulling Items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and approving A, J, K, L, M, N, O, P. Thank you.
Let's take it to a vote.
Let's take that to a vote, ladies and gentlemen. Eyes have it, so moved. And so I guess we'll just start with B and work our way straight down the list. Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, we might be able to handle it in bulk after I ask a couple of questions. So, the first question I'm gonna ask is regarding Item F, which is the generator maintenance services issue. City manager and staff may recall, last year, Mr. Mitchell sat up here and pulled apart various contracts with issues. One of the issues was in this generator maintenance contract, and so I guess what I'm asking is, one of the items he realized we were paying for was the $5.90 a month for a generator at the sheriff's office, which we didn't have a generator at the sheriff's office. So I'm wondering if that has been fixed, because it's still showing on this contract.
Okay, so the, the charges that you see in the contract renewal, on the original contract, that is an annual service fee for two semi-annual services. So you can just split it in half, basically, for each service. Council authorized, maybe about six months ago, the purchase of a new generator for our maintenance facility on Commons Drive. In that same motion, it authorized the reinstallation of our older generator back at the sheriff's substation on Stallman Avenue. So we do have those five generators out there now. One at City Hall, one at the annex, one at the shop, one for our heritage run pump off of Benning Drive, and the sheriff's substation.
Okay, so was that amount removed before?
The way that it worked before, and I explained this to Councilor Mitchell, is we didn't get automatically invoiced for those services. We were only invoiced for services performed. So if we, if it was still on the contract, but we didn't have a generator there, we would've never have paid that, because they never would've serviced it, and they never would've charged us for it. But it is back, because there is a working generator at that facility now.
Okay, and because I could not access archived records, because our website is down, I was not able to dig any further, but I do have, because I remember that we had a whole meeting on problems with invoices and accounts, and us being billed for things we didn't have.
I, I remember them very well, Councilor Ranswell. One other thing is, there was an addendum to the renewal for last year that officially removed the sheriff's substation generator from the price list found in the original contract. That doesn't, that wasn't included this time, because again, the sheriff's substation has a generator again.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. The other one I want to check on is the miscellaneous fire safety equipment renewal. Listed on there is the sheriff's EOC, and we don't have a sheriff's EOC.
Sorry, I'm pulling up that item. Give me one second.
Sure, no problem.
There is not a, okay, let me, let me pull it up real quick.
On our copy, it's at the very bottom of the page, and then the cost goes up to the next.
Let me try this one. I'm sorry, please be patient with me. One second, my, it takes a minute to download these PDFs.
Michael, if you'll let me, that, I can answer that. So basically, what you see, this is, I gave the recommendation for purchase order lines to encumber the amount of the contract that we would expect to pay, and we did this by major account. And the EOC and the sheriff's office both ended up on line seven, because they both are considered public safety buildings. The, the EOC is right over here, behind City Hall, it's where we keep our servers.
Right, but wasn't that destroyed?
No, we, we still, the building's still active, and we keep very critical equipment in there.
Okay, but it's not for the sheriff's office, right?
No, it is not at the sheriff's office. Those are two different locations, but they are both related to public safety, so in the, the purchase order, they ended up on the same line because of similar account coding.
To kind of build upon what Crystal just said, places like the library, though they're not recreation per se, parks and recreation, under Crystal's universe of accounting and all that business, it is considered recreation, the library. So, the way that, if you'll notice in the budget document, she splits out a lot of the, our key functions based on these accounting principles that she has to conform to.
Right, right, and a lot of what she's done, well, almost everything she's done that I know of, is done much more logically than we've seen it before, so I appreciate that. I guess the question is, why are we continuing to pay for something that's sheriff's office property?
The sheriff's office is the city of Destin's property. The sheriff, the law enforcement officers happen to inhabit our building to provide law enforcement for the city.
Okay. All right, well, I, I'd really like to be able to look into each of these a little bit more with information, but I guess at this time, I'll go ahead and, I hate to do that, because I feel like, but it sounds like y'all have at least addressed these issues, so I'm not gonna do that. Let's go ahead, and I'll make the motion then to go ahead and approve B through I.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Seeing no further discussion? Eyes have it, so moved.
Thank y'all for humoring me and going through that, but this was a big deal last year, as some of y'all will recall.
All righty then, that takes care of that portion. Now we go into Item Number 7. Mr. Braden?
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
You're good?
Thanks, sir. Dr. Ranswell?
Thank you. So, I have on here the resident versus non-resident distinction, which was continued from the last meeting. I'm not sure Mr. Bowman or Ms. Kopp or whomever might have some additional information to share with us on that.
Yeah, I mean, on this, I understand that essentially, the, if you boil the issue down, you, there's a policy issue related to whether people who don't necessarily live in the city, maybe they live in Kelly or something, but they own property in the city, whether they can take part in some of the city's amenities, like Joe's Bayou passes and that kind of stuff, is that, is that basically what they're-
Yeah, but, so, for example, this person's home is actually in Kelly, which obviously is not city of Destin, but they are a joint property owner in several other properties in the city of Destin. But yet, when they go to Joe's Bayou or something else, they're having to pay non-resident.
So let me give you kind of just legally what the definition of a resident is, and keep in mind, I'm gonna give you kind of the legal definition of a resident, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the council is bound by that term. You can define resident however you want to, for your own purposes, your own policy. Generally, when the law or the courts look at what a resident is, though, it's where a person, it's kind of the same thing as a homestead, so it's where you live and intend to live in the future. So, it is true that maybe an individual who lives in Kelly but owns property in the city is not a resident in the traditional sense of the law. Now, and I don't know, I haven't spoken with city staff about this, so I don't understand. Is it, is it an operating policy, operating instruction where this is located?
This has always been the direction the council has given to staff ever since I've been on board, that, that all these benefits were to encourage the residents to participate and take part in the community. So it's just a policy matter.
Right, which is why this is sort of an anomaly, because he is purchasing property and participating in the community, it's just his residence happens to be in Kelly.
So, as Lance said, though, this has been a policy direction from the council in the past. The council can always change its mind on its policy direction, so, if that is the pleasure of the council, I'm sure-
Yeah, I would like to have Lance have staff look into bringing something back that might better address this issue.
Can I ask you a question? Almedez here. I thought and had understood for years that the reason why Kelly and Regatta Bay were not considered residents, because we were hoping they're an HOA, would encourage them as a, as an HOA to be part of the city, because if they, as a large group of residents, became part of the city, we would have a larger population, instead of 11,500 voters, we would have however many people live in Regatta Bay, however many people. So, it would benefit the city, and tax money for the residents and from the state, because we have a bigger headcount, we would qualify for pay. Our mayor would qualify for pay.
Right, and so that incentive-
That's the incentive. So to say, well, you know, we'll make you a resident because you live here, we want you to want to be part of the city and part of the process of getting more bang for our buck as the city in the state of Florida, that we don't get, because we have two huge, beautiful, you know, HOAs that have not gotten enough of their members to say, let's, let's be part of these numbers, let's get more money for Destin.
Right, and I agree with you-
We would love to annex them.
Yeah, absolutely, but I think the distinction here is, that's not his sole piece of property. He's got other properties.
Even the states, like I own land and a home in Alabama, and I pay Alabama taxes, but I don't have an Alabama driver's license, because that is not my main residence, so I do not get the same privileges as an Alabama resident, because even though I pay property taxes and I own the land, that is not my place of residence.
Like homesteading, if you will.
It's not my place of residence, and I, I can feel for people like this, but in the interest of fairness to all the people that do live here, and do pay taxes to the city-
But he does pay taxes to the city, which is what my, I'm sort of getting at.
Well, in essence, yes, but it's basically, you wanted to talk about what is a resident and a non-resident? Really, he's not a resident, because he's not living in Destin city limits. He lives in an unincorporated portion of what people conceive to be Destin, but it's not.
That's a great point. Really, resident, non-resident. Well, I mean, would it, would council like to see me bring this back and us have a bigger discussion, or are y'all content with how it is?
Do we get the HOA leads for those two residential areas to come and talk to us? Because I would love to know why they are adamant not to add more money to the city.
Because it doesn't benefit them, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, except when they want to launch a boat at Joe's Bayou. Mr. Destin?
While, while I understand the rationale, but I'm Dr. Ranswell's train of thought, I am happy to stay with the traditional homestead rule. Otherwise, we have thousands and thousands of condominium owners from all over the country who would also qualify for the resident discounts, so-
But they're not.
I don't think I'd be in favor of that.
Point taken. Okay, well, I wanted to be sure and bring it up, because I promised this individual I would, and so I have. So thank y'all for your input on that. A couple other items I had was, one of them is, I'd like to have on a future agenda, a discussion regarding our committees and their training, and our expectations of what they do on the committees, in accordance with our own 3.8. I really feel like they are not being tasked the way we anticipated or they anticipated, and I'd like to see us better utilize the committee system. So Lance, if you would mind adding that to a future agenda. And then I wanted to follow up on the status of the post occupancy building inspections.
The land use attorney and my office are in advanced stages of preparing an ordinance at this point.
We are aiming for the LPA meeting in October.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And then the last thing I have is, when I was on Facebook yesterday, I think it was, I, one of the pop-up ads I got was an ad for rent your backyard to people, and the website was swimply, like instead of simply, swimply, and I clicked on it, and sure enough, people are renting out their backyards and their backyard pools by the hour. So, yes, which-
My sister-in-law in Atlanta rented a lady's backyard for $100 for three hours to swim in her pool.
Yeah, so I'd like to, obviously, I can see this turning into a problem, so I would like to direct staff, well, not direct staff, but direct city manager to do as he deems necessary, to bring back some sort of proposed ordinance on perhaps how we would address this, and move forward. Ms. Kopp, did you have comment? I heard a rattling of the line.
I was gonna jump in if you needed me, but I'll just say, I mean, we could address it potentially under the current code, if we had to, as a commercial, potential commercial issue in a residential area, but it would certainly be easier from an enforcement perspective to have a direct handling of it in the city code. If the council doesn't want to allow that use, it would be easier to have a code provision that says you can't do it, than try to prove a commercial use in residential, because when we try to prove commercial uses, we have to show the frequency and intensity of the violation, and it puts more onus on staff to collect that kind of information, whereas if the code is direct on it, they can just show you proof of the direct violation and be done. So that is easier. Also, I took a look at the ad that Dr. Ranswell had noticed, and, you know, it said things like, up to 10 guests at a time, and these are the kind of issues that can lead to parking problems and so on, so it could be addressed in the code either as a prohibition or to limit impacts such as parking and things like that. So it's just something that staff can think about and discuss with the city manager if council doesn't have further direction at this time.
Yeah, it was kind of sketchy, because I noticed one of the ads said something like, "We have high fences and lots of trees, so no prying eyes." And I thought, I don't want to know, I just don't want to know, yeah, so I'm looking forward to something coming back, yeah.
Family pool?
Yeah, yeah, so, so that would be all I have on that wonderful note, so thank y'all.
Thanks. Man, you just put my mind in the gutter, ma'am. Mr. Destin?
Tonight, at this late hour, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Destin, so much. Mr. Bagby-
I'm not gonna rent out my pool either.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bagby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. Alibi on the fee structure, make sure we discussed about the right-of-way vacation, and who pays for that if it has to go to a referendum. to see that, that the applicant has to pay for that referendum, if, if a referendum is required. I'm going to ask the city attorney and the, our contracted attorney, I don't even know what we call, Mr. Burns, but to draft a request for an AG opinion, and I've talked with them and asked that they put that on the next agenda, next regular agenda. And then I will, I talked to the city manager today about, there is a 60-foot wide utility easement that would make a great park, linear park, and it is between Windsor Forest and Eagle's Landing, and I would even call it Gary Lee Park if he so, if he wanted to donate it to the city and take the tax write-off or whatever, he would be entitled to. But I'd like the city manager and Parks and Rec to look at that and see if, if there was a value in that being a city park, and then maybe we could direct you to enter into some discussions. But if Mr. Lee is so inclined, we would love to have that piece of property. Thank you.
Ms. Abert.
Thank you, Mayor. The drive-through lanes at Water Burger, Krispy Kreme, and Chick-fil-A, I think we were all discussing these at the last meeting, and we just kind of ran out of time. I do know that Chick-fil-A has purchased and is moving because they want to accommodate a better drive-through. Can you expound on those properties? Lance, I think you had more information, or Webb had, but he's not here tonight.
We have reached out to Chick-fil-A, and we're carrying discussions about future operations as far as their current site, and yes, they are also in our review process, excuse me, for their next location, and we're looking at how we can better improve their circulation, given their popularity in the city. We also have reached out to Water Burger, and we are awaiting their response. We are in the process of trying to reach to, to Krispy Kreme, so that's why we are at this point.
All right, that's great, thanks for that feedback. And then my second issue, that was the littering fines, was brought to my attention that throughout different states, the littering is $1,000, and it's $100 here in Destin. So I asked the city manager if there was a way we could change our ordinance to increase our fines in Destin to $1,000, so people don't leave their beach chairs on the beach or throw their, if somebody sees them, it's a little bit more, has more teeth to put into it, and it's, you know, 20 years later, $100, maybe back then was a lot, but now it's nothing. So if we could change that, maybe city manager and bring an ordinance back, whatever we have to do to upgrade our littering fine, and that also helps with our Leave No Trace Behind campaign that we're trying to really encourage people. Seen some posts on Facebook that, you know, people have basically let the people at the front desk know, hey, we've got three floats, two chairs, and a fishing pole, can we leave them in our room? And they're now working with guests that want to make sure they don't trash their stuff, and they're not going to take with them, that they're basically paying it forward. So I can hopefully encourage that to happen more often. So I don't know if you'll be able to get that ordinance in the next couple of meetings or how long that takes the process. Is that doable? Okay. And then the last thing was, we were talking about the Destin City Welcome to Destin sign that's on the Eglin property, and I was talking to Webb, I think you were out, Lance, and I was hoping to get council's permission to work with the city manager or city staff to work with the Eglin administration folks to find out if there's an alternative to whether we could raise the Destin sign about a foot so that the fencing doesn't cut it off, or if they would allow us to fence around it so people could take a picture in front of it, or a third case, move the sign over to the other side of the bridge, right as you come off the bridge, right where that end of property of the, the building there is, so people park at side parking lot, then they could walk up and take a picture without getting run over or trying to stop with other cars behind them. So if I can get this council to allow me to work with staff to get Eglin to tell us what we could or couldn't do with that sign, and if not, figure out where we can move it.
That sounds good, and I'll just throw this idea out there too, in case you didn't know, but Destin Commons has this new store called the selfie, the selfie something, the selfie.
Selfie museum.
Selfie museum, and maybe we should, while we're also working on this, have them add the city of Destin on their green screen, to, just to be a placeholder for the time being, because, you know, that's, that's an option.
Do they have to have permission to use our logo? I mean, would we as a city have to say, hey, selfie place here in Destin Commons? You can use our sign, but, you know, we want you to make sure, yeah, if you're in the city limits.
So on this, council, I, I think that Ms. Abert's just asking for some fact-finding authority, kind of similar to Dewey with the Gulf Power. So usually typically what you do when you give fact-finding authority to one council member is there would be a motion to give that fact-finding authority to that council member.
So moved. Second.
A long explanation, sorry.
Any discussion?
One, one brief discussion, and I'd be thrilled to have.
Yeah, I saw you up there, I didn't know if it was, they threw this motion thing at me off.
Yep. It's always good to talk to our friends at Eglin. I imagine they put the fence there because they don't want people stopping.
I already had, I already had that discussion.
Yeah, if you, if you can get their permission to raise it, probably that would be good. I doubt seriously they're going to let us move that fence when the object of it is to stop people from parking and taking pictures, so good luck to, and I'll.
Any permission I can get from y'all to at least try and see if they'll work with us just a little bit, just to help the sign be less cut off?
Well, when, when Commissioner Ponder and I went, we were trying to stop the fence from being built or have access to the park. If you don't mind, I do have a relationship with the general, I could ask him if they're, just specifically about the sign, we didn't do that last time, and then I can get back to you and you can take the ball and run with it.
Well, the motion is sent to Ms. Abert to talk to him.
Sure, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying, just saying.
I'll vote on the motion.
Let's go.
Do I get to vote, or?
Yeah. Eyes have it, so move, go get it.
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Mr. Kim?
Just one quick thing, was just going to see if we could get an update on the Harbor Pump, was it successful, or where we at with that?
Okay, we are still waiting on parts for the big pump, but we have had the, the pump that we got from the Four Prong Lake, we've had that running. We ran it pretty much the majority of last week, and it was running today.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have one thing I was going to bring up, Dr. Ramswell, for her input, is that we have an, we have a Destin, city of Destin Youth Council Committee that I was told today, Mr. Ray's the liaison for that. I, I don't think it's been active for many years or for so, for however many years, whatever, but, one, I was curious if, to go to the Destin High School to present an idea, you know, to, we have youth that now are of the age and are part of Destin High School that might be interested if it's presented the correct way. And two, if that's something that they would want to do, the citywide plan that Don was talking about, I think would be a very beneficial project for the youth of our city to be part of, with all the things that they're doing, so.
Yeah, in fact, I have spoken with Ms. Worth, who is the leadership person over there, and mentioned this very idea to her, but you were welcome, I don't know if that's, is that going to be allowed, if I've already talked to her about it in terms of sunshine, but Kyle, could, I brought it up, but if he'd like to follow up on it and pursue it, is that okay?
Sure, Kevin, why don't you just talk to Ms. Worth, and let's see if Destin High School might be interested.
Cool, if you'd like to do that, please feel free.
Okay, thank you.
For thanking us.
All righty then.
That's it, sir.
Okay, I got one thing, and this is for staff, and Joey's not here tonight, so is there any explanation for the condition or the future of the former Popeyes Restaurants by the Pottery Barn? It's got a big giant hole inside of it, it's all rundown, does, does code enforcement been made aware of that, or do we have, we have recourse for, for something along those lines?
Joey is out today, but I accompanied Joey and, and one of the code officers up there within the last four weeks, and I know that they issued additional, have to get the right word, citation, for multiple things, including litter and the condition of the building and, and some other things.
That was on my last bike ride when I took notice of it, and that's all I got.
It's, my, my understanding, that building just sold recently.
No, no, the old Popeyes.
Yeah, the old Popeyes, yeah, it's, it's sold, I'm not sure what they're going to put there, but it's sold.
Okay.
According to a realtor told me that.
Well, maybe we can reach out to the realtor, find out what's going on.
It's not part of the Old Time Pottery Plaza, though, it's a separate.
Separate, separate piece of property, but.
Old Time Pottery just closed, didn't it?
The only thing I didn't do is I didn't look in there to see if anybody was living there, but we need to, we need to, we need to address that one. Ms. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one issue, and that is an update on the Destin fishing fleet litigation against the city in the Burt Harris context. As you know, we were supposed to have that trial this week, starting tomorrow through Friday, and it has been continued at their request due to one of their lawyers coming down with COVID, actually. So that is put off until a date undetermined at this time, but once we get a new trial date, we will let you know.
Thank you, ma'am. And last but not least, before we go to public comment period, Mr. Bowman.
Nothing for me.
All right, last opportunity for the public to make any comments.
I'll say it.
Okay, thanks. Better yet, just walk over to the house and knock on the door. You got, well, this is true, just look for the big silver truck. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and your leadership, and the meeting adjourned.